Very good. It's August 14, 2017. It's after 6:00 PM. I'll call to order the City Council workshop for August 14, 2017. First item on our agenda for workshop is Reno Park Design Guidelines. Let me explain for some of you who haven't been here before. Normally on workshop nights, it's a conversation between City Council and staff, particularly with regard to the Reno Park Design Guidelines. We as City Council really feel that we want to get input from the neighborhood as well. And so we are going to afford opportunity, and we've given public notice, that even though it's not a -- no decisions will be made tonight, and you're not testifying under oath or anything of that nature. But we do want to give you an opportunity for some input. So we'll have the presentation from staff, and then we'll then hear from members in the audience who would like to address this issue. And then we'll have City Council questions and discussion, and prepare us for the next round of what will happen with this. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Well, I have Cheryl Drake of the Community Development Department start the presentation.
Good. Good evening, Cheryl.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us tonight, giving us some of your time. We're here with an update on the Reno Park Edition Historic District Design Guidelines to give you a little information on where we are, and hopefully get some direction from you moving forward. So our agenda for tonight is for to have some brief discussion about the project. I'm going to go over what the project area is, a little bit of history on the project, again, the purpose of the workshop. We'll have our consultants go through the information that we would like to focus on tonight, and then we'll talk about next steps. The project area is just to the west of Old Town. It's bounded by Ralston Road on the north, the railroad on the south, and approximately between Zephyr and Yarrow Street. In December of 2014, the city received a petition from approximately 85% of the homeowners in the project area requesting that the portion of the area that was zoned multifamily be rezoned to residential small lot. They did this because they were concerned about large, massive development occurring in the area that was not consistent with the character of the historic district. In May of 2015, council did pass a rezoning. So now that the area is all zoned for single-family development, we do have, I believe, one duplex and one triplex that were existing in the area. As part of that request, the group that came to us requested interest in having design guidelines established for the area in order to further preserve the character. So the city applied for a grant from the state, and in February of 2016, we received a state from the Historic Fund to hire a consultant to work with us to develop some design guidelines. In May and November of 2016, we had two community meetings to work with the community on developing those design guidelines. And then we had a joint study session with yourself, Planning Commission, and our Design Review Advisory Committee in 2016. Then in April and June, we started talking about implementation of those guidelines. And there was some concern amongst the neighborhood as to whether or not they should be strictly historic preservation guidelines, that were all mandatory, or whether or not it should be more lenient, and have just some focus on a few of the guidelines. So what we did is we reached a compromise where we looked at the main items of concern in the neighborhood that were expressed to us, and those were scale, mass, height, structure placement, and porch characteristics. So what we're proposing is that guidelines dealing with those topics be mandated or priority, and which we would require you go through a design review on, and that the rest of the guidelines that were in the draft that you saw at the workshop would be advisory, and they would just strictly be historic preservation best practices. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the consultant, and they can walk you through where we've been on working on this implementation strategy.
Forward is...
Middle one.
The middle one is forward. Okay, thanks very much. Good evening. I'm Norrie Winter of Winter &amp; Company. And with me is my colleague Nick DeFrank. Nick may help me out if there are technical questions that come up later on. Based on the directive from a work session with council, as Cheryl noted, we worked with the community to identify those items that would be considered priority, those that would be in some way subject to requirements in the review process. And along the way, we developed approximately about a 20-page handout that I think you've probably received, which focuses on those. They are extracted from the full draft of the design guidelines as they existed back several months ago. There are more than 100 pages of design guidelines in that full draft, and about 90 of those pages now would be just simply advisory recommendations on best practices, particularly related to finer grain details associated with treatment of historic buildings. The work in the past couple of months has really focused on these five items. One is we merged some language, cutting it down in some cases where it was redundant in the document. We also added some text for clarity. In some cases in the work sessions, community residents said, "Well, it says be in proportion. Can you give us a number?" And so we put a number in, and we'll show you some of those. And in other cases, people were having difficulty, perhaps understanding visually what the concept was, and so we've added more illustrations. And we took several comments from the citizens, both through email communications and then certainly in the work sessions, in making the revisions that I'll be highlighting with you here. There are these that we're going to focus on, which are ones that either we feel there is still an unclear direction from the community, and we really need direction from you, or we did in some cases add clarity and wanted to present that this evening because members of the community have not necessarily seen those yet. So I'll be addressing each one of these as we move through the handout. But they focus pretty much on the basic form and placement of buildings, and on a few details related to the character of the front. I would say that a lot of the emphasis in the design guidelines now, those that we would call priority, is on the character from the street of maintaining a certain sense of mass and scale, and sense of connection with the neighborhood, with the use of front doors and porches facing the street, for example. So what I'm going to do is just highlight them briefly. And where there is a point of discussion, we will -- we've highlighted that in a red box in the presentation. So a screen like this is one in which, generally speaking, there appeared to be agreement in the last round of workshops that this was an important guideline to have in place. It really is about the only one left that focuses on preservation per se, and that says preserve and respect the historic character of a property, and that particularly focuses on the form. Again, there are no longer any guidelines that talk about preservation of original material. There's no guideline talking about preserving original windows or doors. It is only on keeping the form of the original building so that the scale and character of the street is maintained. That's important to understand because the vast majority of the properties are historic. They are considered contributors. This is the map from the survey of the district. And all of those parcels that are in gray are considered contributors. They're buildings from the period of historic significance, and they retain sufficient integrity to be considered contributing historic structures. Those that are in the pink rose color are ones that are non-contributors. They're either too young, or they've been substantially altered. And then the green ones are where properties of that time have been demolished. Now, some of those may now have new construction on them, but that is the map at the time of the survey. So moving past that first guideline and into the next one, this is the preservation principle that is left is to preserve the original porch or stoop on a building. And the issue here is that for some of the buildings, some members of the public still felt that they should be able to remove the original historic porch and install one that is of a different design. But our recommendation is that this being one of the key features of the district, the historic character of those porches, and that we heard other people in workshops saying it was very important to them, we recommend that that remain a priority guideline. The next one, 2.49, and I guess to explain to the community, if the numbering seems a bit odd, that is because literally these are the ones that have been pulled out of the full 100-page document. And for ease of reference, everything is still numbered that way. So that's why you will see the numeric sequencing here jumping around a bit. 2.49 provided guidance about the design of a porch. There really were no questions about that one in the last work session. We did add for clarity the last bullet that adding a shelter over a stoop on some of the smaller, minimal, traditional-type style buildings would be appropriate. And then 2.51 is one that talks about reconstructing a porch if the original material is there. And we added some language here for clarity to make certain that you can reconstruct a missing porch. 2.55 addresses the guidelines for the mass and scale of an addition to an historic building. And the key principle for additions to an historic building is that when all is said and done, when the construction of the addition is complete, that you still be able to see the original scale and form of the historic structure. Not that you can't build additions, but that it be done in a way that you can still understand the character of the original. Now, this is one that some people still have trouble with. But from the standpoint of what many people have said in the neighborhood of maintaining the character of the street, that preserving those front scale of buildings by being certain that additions are in scale and located appropriately is still important. There are several illustrations that help to clarify the types of additions that would be appropriate and those that would be inappropriate. And there are a wide range that are illustrated as possibilities. Some of those are additions to the roof of a building, adding a second floor, a story and a half, for example. And in these cases, the emphasis is on maintaining the original scale as you see it from the street, keeping the addition back far enough. And for clarity, we've added against some proportional numbers, percentages as suggestions of what would be the correct proportions. So proportionality is a big concept behind many of the additions. One of those that, though, that would be inappropriate from the standpoint of preserving the integrity of an historic building is to fully pop the top and do a pop-top, which is shown at the bottom here. And some people have expressed concern that they should be able to do that. And again, from a standpoint of maintaining the character of the original buildings and their scale, we recommend that alternatives that accommodate an addition, but in a way that maintains the character in front, be the ones that would be permitted. And so at the request of some of the owners, we also added in for clarity some information about the location of dormers, and that dormers can be added to existing buildings, and gave some proportional dimensions to help people understand what would be appropriate in terms of doing that. This is important because it does accommodate more headroom and adding livable space in some of the attic spaces now that exist, and/or if you were to be doing a smaller rooftop addition. Other types of additions are also illustrated. And again, proportions and numbers are suggested here in some cases. Those added to the rear that maintain the character of the front of the building are ones that are certainly promoted, and there are a wide range of options that are illustrated that show how that could be done. There is a point, though, of proportionality when the addition becomes the tail wagging the dog. And that's what this one, item number six, illustrates, is even located to the rear, even though the original building is still intact up front, the rear addition is overwhelming to the historic building. A variety of other addition types are illustrated as appropriate and inappropriate, again, for clarity, and again, with some of the dimensional percentages shown. And just wanted to just point out, show you all of these because they are -- some of these have been modified and added on to add clarity based on the last workshop. And so you see, again, some proportions and dimensional suggestions of when an addition is appropriate and when it might be inappropriate. The next section addresses some general guidelines that could apply to an historic property or to building a new building. And there are three guidelines that are in this section that remain, two of which we're recommending still remain as priority guidelines. One that we're recommending be shifted to be an advisory one. But the location of a new building in terms of aligning it with front yard and side yard setbacks, and orienting the front to face the street were fundamental characteristics that people identified in workshops as being important. And those remain as recommended as priority guidelines. We did not really hear any objections to those in the last workshop. There was a discussion about the guideline addressing solar access. And while it is a concern in the community, people were concerned that it would be hard to administer in general terms unless there were a prescriptive solar access ordinance, basically, in place, which is really above and beyond what this process could take on. And so in lieu of that, we've recommended that this guideline just simply be moved to the advisory guidelines for simplicity, rather than having to ask staff to administer something without dimensional standards. The next section specifically addresses new construction. And guideline 4.8 addresses the design of that in terms of being in proportion to those seen historically, in terms of height, and those in the context. Now, in the last workshop, the items highlighted here in red, we realized there was some confusion and that some people were misinterpreting some of the language in the guidelines. And I think that may still be the case. And the distinction here is what is a one-story building, a one-and-a-half-story building, and a two-story building, and where might they be permitted? So to help illustrate that, we have these four buildings illustrations. A one-story building is quite obviously a single story. There is no occupied second level, although there may be an attic with a vent, as you see here. And that is permitted anywhere within the district and in any location in terms of being close to the street. There are many buildings that are one-and-a-half story. Now, some people, I think, are interpreting those as being two stories, and are thinking that a one-and-a-half-story form is not permitted anywhere in the district. The guidelines do permit that anywhere in the district. The question is how to maintain that relatively low scale in front when there are a few full two-story buildings. The full two-story building is what you see on the right, and that is where the windows basically are under the plate line as opposed to being tucked into a dormer, which is what you see essentially in the one-and-a-half-story building. So it is possible to have a second floor in a one-and-a-half-story building, and there's been some confusion about that. There is a variation, which is the third image from the left, and that is with the potential of having a lower portion in front and then a taller portion in the rear. And that is permitted anyplace in the guidelines. The one that is limited is the full two-story as a new construction to be where that is already a part of the character of that block. And there are a few locations where that is a part of the context. But we certainly heard a lot of interest in maintaining the one-story scale, as you see from the street, of porches and the one-and-a-half-story tradition of many of the historic buildings that are in the district. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time to make that clear because I think there has been some misunderstanding. We certainly realized that at the last workshop, that there were some people confused about that. So this is just highlighting that one area, which still may be a point of contention. But it is a fairly limited discussion in terms of a full two-story building, not a one-and-a-half-story building. There are other guidelines. These guidelines also then provided some additional dimensional information as well. In terms of setbacks, these illustrations were expanded to show in terms of determining context, sorry, of when would you know that you have a two-story building next to you and therefore would be compatible in scale. These illustrations are drawn to show where you would determine that you have a context that includes two-story buildings. Now, it's fairly tightly drawn because we had heard concerns about two-story buildings looming over their neighbors and maintaining a sense of lower scale and light and air along the street front. The next guideline has to do with mass and scale, and basically the making use of roof forms that are compatible. There was a little bit of confusion, I think, in the workshop about roof forms for additions. And that's why we've added this picture down at the bottom here. This is one of the styles called a minimal traditional style in the district that has a lower pitch. Additions to buildings with lower pitches certainly can match and should match the existing building. And there was some, perhaps, a misunderstanding at the last workshop that that wouldn't be possible, that you would have to have a higher pitch on an addition for a building with a low pitch. And that, again, we wanted to clarify that. We added some language to make that clearer. But this illustration also was added to show how you can break up the mass of a larger building to fit within the scale of those seen traditionally in the district. This guideline addresses the proportion of porches. And that one was, again, a very important one that people were concerned about, porches being one of the key character-defining features. And in the last workshop, these dimensions were set forth, that a minimum dimension of six feet to provide enough depth to a porch, but not exceed that of what was seen historically. So it's between a six- and seven-foot depth is what we're seeing historically for historic porches. And that's recommended as the guideline for new ones as well. And then the -- these were added based on discussions with participants in the last workshop. And that was clarity on how to do a one-and-a-half story with dormers for a new building. And these are a couple of examples of how that kind of a design could happen for dormers that are in proportion with those seen in the area that allow for livable space on a second level of a building that's in character with the design traditions of the district. And again, some dimensions have been added for that. And so again, this is important to note that that is allowed in the draft's guidelines right up at the minimum front setback. And then lastly, a guideline addressing secondary structures. There was a concern about a sort of suburban look of a two-story garage facing the street, being up close to the street, that that was out of character. And so the guidelines were clarified here in terms of making it clear that a single-car garage can be facing the street, and it still should be set back from the front of the building so that with the proportion of the historic building or the new building is the predominant scale as you see it from the street. And otherwise, to locate a garage preferably along an alley when feasible. So that's an overview of the priority guidelines and some of the adjustments we've made based on the community comments that have happened in the last couple of work sessions. Again, to reiterate that the focus is on maintaining the character of the street, the proportions as perceived from the street, and on maintaining a sense of connection with doors and porches connecting to the street and to neighbors. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thanks, Norrie. I'd just like to briefly touch on a couple of items that weren't specifically priority guidelines, but they were important comments that we received from the community that we're not at consensus on. And those are dealing with demolition and a philosophy as to whether or not identical guidelines should apply to both existing contributing structures and new construction. As you can imagine, there are folks who are strong preservationists who feel that demolition in the district is greatly going to impact the integrity of the district. And we have other folks who have expressed to us that due to the condition of some of those existing homes, it would just be maybe either structurally impossible or very expensive in order to maintain that structure and add on to it. In addition, there's been a concern expressed that some of the guidelines might actually encourage scrapes because they're putting more restrictions on the existing homes than on new ones. And so perhaps the same guideline should apply to both. As staff, we believe that if we did that and we didn't have stronger guidelines dealing with our historic resources that the integrity of the historic district would definitely be threatened. So we're recommending that we still stay with the distinction between the existing and the new construction. With that, we'd like to talk about where we want to go from here. And what we would like to do is get some direction from you and move forward in the preparation of our final design document, in which we would take the document that we presented to you at the work session, and we would incorporate this additional information that we've provided on creating those standards and the clarity on those priority guidelines. And we'd like to bring that back to council for consideration in October of this year. From there, we would move into preparation of the necessary amendments to our land development code that will be necessary in order to implement these guidelines. Hopefully, we would have a planning commission hearing in early spring, and then follow-up dealt with a council hearing in early September. I'm sorry, early summer.
Early summer.
September. For that, we'll open it up for comments and discussion. And I know you want to take some public comment.
You bet. Any questions from council before we go to public comment? Is everybody comfortable with just going ahead and hearing from -- sure.
So if you have the final guidelines in October, why is it going to be like six months before planning here? Is it...
Because we have to work with our legal staff to actually draft those ordinances. And then we have public notice requirements that have to be satisfied.
So you're saying our legal staff takes six months? Wow.
No, I'm not saying that.
Just kidding.
Mr. Daley, any response?
We can do the five-and-a-half. No, I was joking. We will work as quickly as we can. I have Randall, who will, as you know, be retiring, and Reed is learning. So technically, I have two attorneys that are assigned to that. Maybe we could do it quicker in conjunction with our outside consultant.
The only reason I asked the question was, you know, we've been working on this for a very long time, and I'd like to see it sooner than later.
Certainly.
Very good. So with that, thank you, staff, for the presentation. If there are members of the public who would like to address it, the council, here's your opportunity on this issue. Do we have any members of the -- yes. Come on down to the microphone, state your name for the record. And then let's hear what you got.
I'm John Gerand. I live at 11975 67th Avenue, Urbana, Colorado. I occasionally visit council in meetings. And I am not a resident of the district. I might even got my address wrong. But council had been very progressive about 2007 or 2008 in adopting an accessible dwelling unit ordinance, which in my mind went a good step toward defining affordable housing in the community. I thought that that was a good step. But I don't think it's taken off the way I thought it would take off. As I look at the Reno Park development, the subject of using these pop-ups or extensions or something didn't seem to think about the accessible dwelling unit concept in the discussion, nor in that accessible dwelling unit. There's generally a need for additional parking. And in the presentation tonight, and I haven't attended any of the meetings, to tell you the truth, I don't... the truth, I don't know how that additional parking would be accommodated, and I believe parking tends to be an issue. And so, I would ask that council consider the accessible dwelling unit factor. I mean, when you're doing an expansion, you're expanding it for some purpose, and not unless you just want to expand it to get five unrelated people into the same space. I could understand that, but I think there is a need for affordable housing that ought to be also considered as you consider the plan forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Just come on down and...
Hello, Tom Valenta. I just had a quick question if homes that are exempt or non-contributing, or homes that are being built, if they can be exempt and if they can get that on the letterhead from the city, saying that we're not exempt or that we are exempt from these guidelines?
Okay, we'll address that. Next.
Hello, City Council. Thank you so much for having us and allowing us to speak this evening. We are some of the folks who've been working on this for the last four years and really appreciate the city's efforts, and want to also thank Nori and his team. As you've heard through all of the conversations, these guidelines have come through multiple conversations with many members of the community and have had ample opportunity to weigh in. The biggest thing that we want to emphasize is that no matter what is accepted and moved forward, that we do not force the existing homes to look out of place or to be out of place. Reno Park is the original platted neighborhood of Old Town Arvada, of Arvada, and anything that is done should allow for these existing homes. If someone doesn't want to add to their home, doesn't want to scrape their home, that home should not look out of place because of what happens next door to it. And so, we do request that you really look deeply and make sure that we are adopting guidelines that respect mass, scale, character, as all of the things that Mr. Winter has pointed out. We do recognize that there are concerns about scrapes, and we strongly encourage you to engage in additional conversation to ensure that what we are recommending does not encourage scrapes, but rather supports the preservation of the homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ray Sannibal. I've lived, I live in the Reno Park District. I've lived there for 20 years, so I've lived there just long enough to realize that there is tremendous intrinsic value in this neighborhood, and I think that, I believe that the design guidelines should be rigorously implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Nick Stewart, and I first moved to Old Town Arvada when I was five weeks old from Des Moines, Iowa. But I live on the corner of 57th and Yarrow, and my entrance faces 57th Avenue, so I'm the first A-frame just next to the yoga studio there. My concern is, I have an 1,100-square-foot home. I got a wife of five years and a two-and-a-half-week-old infant.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. It's pride of my life now, and I want to stay in Arvada. My wife grew up in Congress Park. I'm seeing what's happening at Congress Park in Denver. Cherry Creek North trying to come in there and kind of ruin that neighborhood. I've lived in Berkeley. I understand what happens when you scrape an old home and build these million-dollar side-by-sides. I don't want that in my neighborhood, but in order to basically expand on my property, the logical way to do it is to the east, on the, which is my forward-facing front of the house. And within these design guidelines, I can't do it. I'm going to have to build back. My ridge of my A-frame runs east-west. I'm going to have to build to the north toward my friend Tim Richter, and he's not going to like that. We're going to have to take a big tree out, and it's not going to work. Currently, we really want a porch, because I believe the death of American society is the air conditioner. People used to sit outside and meet their neighbors and drink iced tea and get to know what's going on in their community.
That and garage door openers.
Now, we don't, and my wife and I like sitting on the porch and meeting our neighbors. So, I'm not going to be able to build this porch without really scraping my property and doing a full new construction. So, I got a lot of concerns, and I want to stay in Arvada, but I need a bigger home. Thank you.
My name is Patrick McRory. I, to piggyback on Nick, what Nick said, last Monday, we closed on 5701 Yarrow Street. So, that's a 1,300-square-foot house that we just discovered asbestos in. The house is completely structurally unsound and has a bunch of issues. I mean, my asbestos bid was $27,000. I paid $350,000 for the house. I don't, I mean, at some point, my two children, my five-year-old who starts at St. Anne's next, two weeks from now, and who I love the idea of walking to school, and my one-year-old son, who in four years will also, I hope, be able to be walked to school. I love the light rail idea. I work a block from Union Station. I like the idea of being able to walk to the light rail after I drop off my daughter and take the light rail to Union Station and go to work and come back and pick her up and do the same thing. I don't know if I can do that in the 1,300-square-foot house that exists right now, and I don't know if I can do that in some of the restricted guidelines that are being presented here. But I love, I'm passionate. I bought the house in a totally risky environment with this going on. I bought the house knowing what was going on, but we care so much, and we love this area so much. We live in Golden right now. We come to Old Town Arvada once, if not twice, a week, and we love the idea of making that our home for 20 or 30 years, if not longer. And I want that reality to be something that I don't worry about all the time. So, I would just ask the council to consider families like myself who want to come in and respect what the neighborhood looks like now. We're not trying to build, you know, a million-dollar block modern house like you see in Lo High. That's not what we're trying to do. I love history. I love the porch idea. I love all that stuff, but I still have to be able to build a house that my family can live comfortably in while respecting the nature of the neighborhood, which I think can be done. And so, I guess I would just ask the council to consider families like mine who want to move here and make it our home for decades and walk our kids to school and enjoy Old Town and support the heck out of the community every day, every, you know, in all ways that we can. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is your address, would you say 5701?
5701, so, Nick.
So, the, on the west side from you?
Northwest corner, northwest corner of 57th.
Okay, two-story house?
Two-story blue house, yeah, in the, so, yeah, so, right there.
All right, thank you.
Right. Oh, here comes trouble.
Uh-oh. Hi, Mayor and City Council. I'm Shelley Cook from 5708 Zephyr Street, within Reno Park Design Guidelines area. And mostly, I wanted to say thank you for moving forward on this process. I realize it can be a little bit thorny, and the fact that you're willing to do it just, you know, I understand what that means, and I wanted to say thank you very much. I also wanted to stress the process has been one that I would think is, you know, worthy of what you're doing. It's really been thoughtful, taken into account lots of points of view. It's been thorough, et cetera. And then, the last thing is, the ADU mentioned made me think about my experience with accessory dwelling units within the district and kind of a, you know, a mini effort to develop under a design guidelines sort of structure. And it worked fine, both building and planning. I think we're able to take what we were hoping to do, allow some flexibility, but still keep it in a way, you know, compatible with the surroundings, with my existing structure and so forth. So, I could say, you know, you can move ahead with this with some confidence in what we've done in the past in terms of additions and whatnot within this district with similar guidelines in place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Anybody else?
One thing to add, if I can. I think we need to consider, I mean, there are unique properties like mine that had, I'm the biggest lot on the block, and just by the way mine faces, it makes it really weird to fit within these design guidelines without scraping the property. Young families, to that note, I mean, we can't, I mean, it's, I know we did it 100 years ago. We raised eight kids in a house like mine, and it worked, right? But now we have plumbing and things are different. In all reality, I'm seeing, I'm in the mortgage finance world and real estate, I'm seeing more and more people want to live in Old Town Arvada in these older homes, and they need a little love, and people do care about the character of the neighborhood. But do we want a bunch of renters in Old Town Arvada? Is that what we want? Or do we want owners that are going to look out for the interests of what's happening in Old Town? When I was a kid, it was crummy. Nobody came to Old Town, except it was the first traffic light and whatever, right? We didn't come. Now, it's amazing. You guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Right. Nancy, you were coming down.
Nancy Young, 7706 Robinson Way. These guidelines have been through an enormous amount of thought, and the so-called priority guidelines, I think, are excellent. There are, however, two fatal flaws, and here's where I come from. If we are going to have a national historic district, we must have authentic historic homes. That is a basic premise of an historic district. The fatal flaws in these guidelines are, first, the priority guidelines apparently will be subject to some form of design review. These priority guidelines should be codified in the land development code. They should be required if you want to maintain a national historic district. If they're not required, if it's just design review, we may well end up with unequal application of the guidelines. Just look at Old Town. For example, one property owner was required to install authentic historic-style windows, while other property owners have compromised historic structures with nonhistoric garage-type windows. That is unequal application of the same requirement. The second fatal flaw, and this one is truly fatal, the demolition guidelines are ill-defined, and there's even a reference to a non-existent ordinance. This issue was brought up at every single neighborhood meeting. Neither the staff nor the consultant made it a central topic of discussion. Demolition is central if you want to maintain authentic historic buildings. This flaw of these, a vague demolition guideline is an invitation to scrape these unique, authentic homes. The way these guidelines are written, it is cheap to demolish and expensive to restore. It should be the other way around, and therefore, I recommend that any request for demolition go through the standard process that already exists with a neighborhood meeting, a public hearing process, just the same as developers who request an exception to the land development code. Demolition is an exception to the national historic district. Once these flaws are fixed, the content of these guidelines is quite good and leads to the kind of result that I believe the neighborhood requested at the beginning. They want to preserve their neighborhood character, and their neighborhood character is a national historic district filled with authentic historic homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Ashen Zhou. I live at 12630 West 66 Place in Arvada. I do not live in the historic neighborhood. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things today, and first of all, I want to say that Nancy did a great job of describing the demolition issues that I've had and the position that you've heard me talk about in the past. I think that's a very important one. The demolition side is really difficult. I mean, maybe there's a way to say, you know, if you do, any new construction can't be, you know, a certain size, a certain, you know, floor area ratio. Maybe that gets changed or modified if you do want to scrape, so that it creates kind of a disincentive to scrape, that maybe if they kept the building the way it is, then they could, they could build more than if they scraped it and then we said, well, if you scrape it, then you can only do a one-and-a-half-story building, which is something we really, none of us have really, I don't remember talking about that or discussing that in the meeting, but those are the kind of creative things I would like to have you entertain and, you know, going back to the schedule of the, you know, how we're going to move forward with this. I mean, if, you know, I know that, I can hear Bob saying, you know, let's keep this moving, but on the other hand, you know, let's do it right. So, you know, maybe if we need another meeting, or if we need another month, or something to, you know, to help you, you know, draft some language or work with staff or whatever, to do that and encourage them to look into that, I think that would be very helpful. I was on the internet today looking about, at articles about demolition, and it's happening across the country, from Seattle to Miami. It's just, it's in the news. If you guys Google it, you know, demolish or not demolish historic structure, you'll come, hundreds and hundreds of links to articles, newspaper articles, and historic preservation groups around the country. So, you're not alone. You know, you're taking this on as a very important topic, and I just hope that you, you know, you do it thoughtfully and methodically, and if you need some more time to craft something that maybe truly might be groundbreaking and maybe something unique, maybe you can, you know, get ahead of Boulder and Littleton and other country, communities that are progressive in a way and show them how to do it. That would be fantastic. The last thing I wanted to say was there was a, an owner had submitted a petition. I would like to, if you guys could, tell me what the results of that petition was in the neighborhood, and then also look at that, I would encourage you to look at that very closely, the language of that, and, you know, really almost, you know, word by word, and just make sure that it was represented correctly to the people that signed it and sort of, you know, get kind of into the, into their head and say, you know, why somebody might have signed this or not. And then, you know, and also, the guidelines that she was most critical of was 2.55, 4.8, and 4.10. And those were, to me, that's really gutting the, and, you know, Nori went over all those, and that would be really gutting the real heart and soul of the guidelines that we feel, you know, we've gotten, taken, you know, this much time and effort to get to. So, I'd really like to hear the results of that petition, if you could, for us, if there were some signatures that got, you know, on that petition, and then also just, you know, consider, you know, what that was all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon England, 5705 Yarrow Street, within the district. Just wanted to speak to a few of the comments that had been made. My family and I just underwent an addition to our home in the historic district, and the guidelines weren't in place yet, but if you go back and look at what we did and the guidelines, I think we followed the guidelines even before they were in place and even went beyond some of them, including historic windows and things of that nature that they are saying we don't have to do. It is possible to take one of these homes and make it into a current, modern home even with these guidelines. We went from a one-bathroom house to a three-bathroom house. We have four bedrooms all because of an addition, and if it's well-planned within the guidelines, it really can happen. I know that there are a few houses whose ridge lines run along the street, very few houses, and I know that that's very difficult for them under these guidelines. I don't know if there's something that can be done to help those particular houses, because they really can't, it doesn't seem possible to make it fit that way, but I hope that there would be a way that they can, can do something a little different, given that there are only a handful of those houses in the district. And in terms of the expense of the problems with an older home, the asbestos, the lead paint, all of those things, first of all, that's a part of buying an older home. You go into it with, you should go into it with your eyes open, but second of all, because of our historic district, which we will not keep if we lose too many houses to scrapes, because of that, we have tax incentives available to us through the state that you can apply for that are a direct tax rebate based on what you're doing to help maintain that home such that it is livable. And I think that really speaks to the state trying to support this preservation as well. I just want to make sure that the council is aware of all those things as well as everyone in the audience.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak, but this demolition thing kind of gets to me. My name is Ken Walsh. I inherited a house on Zephyr Street in Mark. I inherited a house on Zephyr Street in March. The house, I think, looked like the city dump. It had squatters in it. And after months and months of litigation, and, and almost 20 dumpsters to clean up, we start taking down the walls of this house that originally was a 500-square-foot house. Then it was added on a porch in the back, and then they turned that into another part of the house, so then it became 700 square feet. Then they took a, a cellar, and they turned a root cellar into a bedroom downstairs. So we're looking at this house as we're taking all the walls down, and it's built in 1909, and you look up, and you realize they didn't build trusses in 1909 like they do today. And so what's the answer for us? Turns out, you gotta take the roof off. You've gotta put on engineered trusses. You've gotta change the whole thing to meet today's standards. So as we started looking at that and realizing now we're down to the studs, we also had to replace the entire floor. So scraping becomes our only alternative because of expenses. It becomes impossible for an individual to go in and make that house back to what it looked like back in 1909 with today's restrictions and codes. And with the things that are going on now with the, with the Reno Park Conservation, I'm thinking to myself, and I, believe me, I've just, we've pondered this, we've pondered this a lot, scraping is our only alternative. And so I, I would like to say to everybody here, we'd love to rebuild this house. That was our intention.
Sir, if I could have you direct your comments to council rather than to the audience.
And, and that was our intention, until we realized it just became costly, too costly, and scraping is our only alternative to start over. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront, because I think there are legitimate times where scraping is the only answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Mudd. I live at 5716 Yarrow Street. And we bought our house 13 years ago with every intention of adding on, and now's the time. Our current house on the main floor is just over 700 square feet. So, and in addition to that, our, the depth of our house is only 23 feet. So in the current, the proposed mandatory guidelines with a 20-foot setback, we actually wouldn't be able to put a second story on our house. We want to put a second story within our current footprint, because we don't want to go into our backyard. So I want to show you. So this is our current house. Under the priority guidelines, this is what we could do.
Is the, is the screen working?
I was, I was gonna, do you want me to just bring him up?
No, 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 right there.
Oh, okay. So we have one of the houses that, with the ridge line that is horizontal to the street, one of the few houses. So under proposed mandatory guidelines, we could do that. We have a small kickback on the side that you can see, where we could put a small room upstairs. And we aren't allowed to add a front porch. This is what we would like to do. And this is still 28 feet by 23 feet. It's a very small house. So I agree with a lot of the guidelines, and I do want to make sure that going forward, scale and size are part of the guidelines, but I also want to be able to do this to my house, and not have to have a 20-foot setback for changes, but to be able to put an addition on top of the existing house.
Can you clarify, is this not allowed in the design guidelines as proposed, but, but your second exhibit was?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they haven't closed it.
Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Pam Prusner. I live at 5623 Yarrow. I grew up in the house right next door, 5625. My concerns are, I can't have a front porch either, and also, what I would have to do when I do want to do something, what those kind of steps would be. And I've heard things like you need to employ historical architects, and you need to, you know, have a lot of this other, you know, just kind of see dollar signs in, in a sense to, to do these kinds of things. I'm very restricted, too, based off my backyard, and I've been interested in a carport or a garage, or something like that, to try to keep my stuff from getting held on so hardly. You know, but those are kind of where I'm coming from, and I, I just need to make sure that we don't make it so restrictive that when we do abide by the guidelines, what is that really gonna look like for us, you know, as a, you know, as an effort to, to keep within the guidelines? So, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else?
My name is Marcia Becker, and I live at 5712 Yarrow Street. We moved there about a year ago, and we love it. We, we really have loved being in Old Town Nevada and being able to go walk downtown and walk to the vet, and walk down here even, so it's, it's been great for us. I've been working on these, and I'm a proponent of guidelines for a long time, and I really hope that we could create guidelines that were simple to understand, that had broad support within the neighborhood, and that focused on really the most important thing in living in a neighborhood like this, which is, you know, the relationship between the neighbors and how the houses we live in can create opportunities for those relationships. To me, a simple set of guidelines would be boiled down to four things. Front porches. The new construction would be required to have front porches, and that existing homes should be allowed to add them. Garages should be located at the back of the lot. Roof pitches should be traditional, because that goes within our neighborhood, and the height should be limited to two stories, but that two-story houses should be allowed. We made a proposal to the neighborhood, which is the petition somebody was talking about, that, and I didn't get around to everybody, it only's been like a week and a half, so I apologize. We would like to have the whole neighborhood participate in that. But we took portions of the proposed guidelines and addressed the areas as being mandatory versus the rest of it as being advisory only. The response was overwhelmingly positive. Of the ones where I knew I was talking to the homeowner, and we only did talk to homeowners and owners, we didn't go into the surrounding neighborhood or renters, or, you know, just really keeping it within the people who had a stake in this neighborhood. Of the homeowners who, who I knew were homeowners that reviewed it, 100% were in agreement with me. 84 homes in our community and businesses also are in this district, 46%, almost half of the homeowners in the district signed. And I have these petitions here.
Why don't you give them to the city clerk?
Hmm?
Why don't you give them to the city clerk?
I didn't, I didn't get, um... I didn't get scans of all of them. Maybe I should have done that, because there's some contact information, so I don't know if I would be able to get, get them back or to get copies of them.
Well, if you want to, you want to hold on to them and get them the way you want them before you...
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, and I'm still getting them, 'cause I mailed some out, and they keep coming into mail.
Why don't you do that? Why don't you hang on to it now, and then...
Okay.
And then at some juncture, if you want us to be thinking about that as we go through the process further.
Which is a pretty broad, you know, it kind of backs up what the first, or actually the second survey said, that 50% of the people in the community did not want to see any mandatory restrictions. And I think it's actually coming a, a long way to have gotten people to agree to restrictions, and to, you know, for such a large proportion of the neighborhood to agree to that. So why aren't the, you know, why aren't these homeowners supporting the proposed guidelines as they are right now? One of the biggest comments was about overreaching of restrictions on property rights, that people feel like they should be able to keep their property rights as they have them, which also really speaks to the people who said that also signed. And that they feel that homeowners should have the ability to make improvements as they see fit. Another hot button issue was the porch. And when I started the petition, I had an item in there that actually would not allow people to build porches, and as people read it and recognized that that's what that said, a number of them have stricken that passage because they did not agree to it. So the section on, you know, people that, there are a lot of people who have stoops right now. There's a lot of houses in this neighborhood who have just a stoop in their front, and they feel that it's, you know, they really want to add a porch. It was the biggest thing I heard about people being able to add a porch and enjoy sitting on their porch and seeing their neighbors. And, you know, you really shouldn't have to tear, I mean, right now, if this thing passes, you'd have to tear your house down if you have a contributing structure in order to add a porch to your house. And, you know, to me, that's just wrong. It's just wrong. And I, there is a, a lot of people who mentioned that they felt that the guidelines as they are now are so stringent that more houses will be turned down, and they've even had people tell me, if I can't do what I want to do, I'm either renting this house, or I'm tearing it down. So, you know, I think that they should look really, really hard at what are gonna be the, what is the impact of this? If you make it so difficult for people to improve their homes, and these homes are small, the average home is 941 square feet, and they are very small, and there's a lot, there are some, there are some really nice houses in the neighborhood, and there are some that are really not. And, and they're not in great shape, they've not been maintained, and we have to address that and be aware of that as we, as we go forward with these guidelines, and make it not a hardship for people to try to even save their house. And just to give you an example of how restrictive these proposed guidelines are, this is, the house is being... Is it on? Yes, there it is. This is a house on Zephyr. It was taken down to the, to the ground, and I think there was a little bit added onto the footprint, and then now this is what's being built. And that people should be aware that this house does not meet the guidelines, that this very small house that everyone loves, everyone agrees, fits into the neighborhood, does not meet these guidelines. And, you know, one of the comments I got, too, is when they looked at what was gonna be allowed, and a lot of people had gone online ahead of me, chasing them down at their door, and had already looked at the guidelines and said, this is, this is ugly. It's, it makes, it's stupid. These houses look ridiculous. And we are being pushed into with the way that the guidelines are written, to this type of, of box, both the new construction and the houses that would be new construction and, and the ones that are there. They want additions, they want the mass of the house to be in the backyards. There is a very negative impact on that, on your neighbors, when you have the mass of a two-story house in your backyard and you're looking down on both of your neighbors, that just, it's, it is, it's a real violation of privacy, and, and I have a little room where I keep my plants, that my neighbors feel look down on them, and they hate it! So, you know, it's, you know, why, why would we be a proponent of this? It, it makes no sense to be having this type of push towards architecture in this community. And once these guidelines are in place, there's really no going back on them. I mean, we can proceed more slowly with some basic things like roof pitches and, and, you know, and, and then move forward if we feel like we need to, to reduce the, the floor area ratios and to do smaller houses. But once this is in place, we're all living with this, and I don't think that's what we really want Reno Park to look like.
Pam, are you about done there?
Yeah, I got one more thing.
Okay, good.
Kind of be thanks, I know everybody's tired.
We haven't, we haven't been running the timer, and we were sort of leaning towards three minutes a person, and...
I know, I know. I, I, you're just only on one page, I'm sorry, I'm getting off my page. And, and what I, what is also poor about this is it's really poor urban planning, that you're, you're reducing the number of windows you can have to the front, and any street access to the front, of people being able to look out their front and be able to see what the neighbors are doing, see what's going on in the street. It's, it's just, I, I've never seen urban planning that would, would advocate this type of, of structures. And just one other thing, as, of all the people that I talked to in the neighborhood, I didn't have a single person who tell me that the historic preservation should override these other concerns, that they felt that how the house, the community lives for the people who live there is the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Do you have a minute or so?
Anybody else new that wants to address this? Looks like we got it covered. Yeah, yeah, we got, if we could, I think we're ready to move on to some questions from the, from the consultant. Just wanted, we're ready for you to come back up if you would.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Mr. Marriott?
So, thank you. I've got a couple questions for you, Mr. Winters. Thank you for what you've done so far, and, you know, doing all this at the public meeting, and the, the changing, continually changing at every turn, and I think it's a good testament to how far it's come, that, you know, I hear pretty broad agreement between all these speakers, although there's some details that seem to be, be not in agreement, and maybe they can't all be in agreement, but I just wanted to talk about a couple different things, and, and see if you can kind of give us some explanation about why some of these things maybe are what they are. The first one I wanted to ask you about is two-story houses. So you had a map up in your presentation of the, the outline of the Reno Park District. How many two-story houses are currently in there?
There are very few, a handful, really, of historic, contributing two-story.
Is that two, two or three or something?
There are full two-story ones, yeah. Well, I think maybe about three or four, we think.
Three or four, you think?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and part of the, part of the, your discussion was about if you're gonna build a new structure, remodel one, about context, about, you know, you can't have a two-story house unless there's a two-story house on one side of you or another to, to make that context. With there only being a couple, three or four two-story houses in the whole district, doesn't that part itself severely limit how many two-story houses could be either remodeled into a two-story or at, or, or built in there, down to just another two or three, or another five or six, or something? I mean, isn't, isn't that really, really restrictive?
Well, again, it is only within the first 20 feet that we're talking about. Beyond that, a full two-story anywhere is permitted. It's in the first 20 feet where the predominant scale of the street is one and one-and-a-half stories. The photograph Marcia showed of her design, I think, meets the guidelines. I'm totally dumbfounded that she thinks they don't, 'cause we tailored the dimensions of those dormers to, to her house, because we thought it was a good example of...
I don't, I don't think that was her house. I think that was a different...
It's one she's designed, I think. But in any case, it, that is an example of what you can build anywhere, and the full two-story with the intent was just to keep things at one or one-and-a-half within that first 20 feet, and beyond that, a full two-story would be okay.
Right. And, and so, tell me, walk me through, you know, what the, what the logic of that would be?
Because, because the predominant scale all along every one of these blocks is one and one-and-a-half stories. And that's what we've heard over and over again, is that that's one of the most important features of the street. With the prospect of replacement buildings, the trend is to full two-stories, and that would be changing the scale of the street and shading neighbors who are those who are retaining those original buildings.
Okay. And so just as a matter of, oh, perspective, once you leave the Reno Park Historic District, if you wanted to build a house on Allison Street, for instance, you could build not just two stories, but you could build three stories, is that correct?
I'm...
Maybe that's a question for Cheryl.
Cheryl may be better at answering that question.
If the only, just the only limitations that we would have would be under the heights restrictions in the city, which is generally 35 feet, unless there's a height exception.
To the, to the middle of the roof line.
It's to the midpoint of the pitch, if you have a pitched roof, to the top of the roof, but if it's flat.
Right. So those new structures across the street from Lawrence Elementary, those fall into that 35-feet...
Yes.
...maximum height, and they're three full, or, you might call them two-and-a-half stories or something, but there's, there's three floors of living...
Yeah, I think they're two-and-a-half.
...of, of living in there. Okay. So the, for me, you know, when I look at the, the question of, of kind of scale there, you know, once you step outside the district, you know, three, three floors of living, and inside the district, you'd be at a one-and-a-half-story, seems like a two-story is really more kind of in the, kind of, kind of in the middle there, and, and I wonder just, you know, the, 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 do you still feel so strongly the logic of that restriction of two stories only once it's... restriction of two stories only once it's 20 feet back? Or, you know, just, to me, that's one of the things that kind of sticks out. Seems like it's a point of contention, a rub for a number of, a number of.
Well, well, it certainly is. You could certainly direct that, that they, that they be permitted. But the earlier survey did indicate that people were very concerned about maintaining that, that lower scale along the street. So that, and the, you know, general comments in the workshops, we thought we had a consensus last, last time around that at one and a half story, that's what people really wanted to build as opposed to a full two-story and that that would work. So that's why we've been recommending.
Yeah, okay. That's why it's come, come, okay, sounds good. And then is, is the restriction on, on pop tops, is that kind of follows that same logic? I mean, I'm, I'm fairly, I have to say, I'm pretty compelled by Ms. Mudd's, you know, example or her example of, of her particular situation about, you know, when you look at, you know, what, what would be her best solution, it seems like her desires is for what would be her best solution. And, and what she would be compelled to do seems like far from ideal, all because of just this restriction of no pop tops.
Well, now, yeah, that one is, is a little bit different because that does bring in the question of is historic preservation a part of this project or not? Because scale of, of other buildings aside, one of the fundamental tests for integrity of an historic building is that you still see the original scale and form of the historic building. Now with those smaller, minimal, traditional buildings, that is very limiting in terms of what you can do right there in front. There are options that we've tried to illustrate in the guidelines for ways to add on to the rear, not necessarily the way the sketch showed, but in ways that would allow to increase square footage. So that one is one where preservation theory comes into play in addition to just the concern about traditional scale of the neighborhood. And that's the, that's the real rub point there.
Right, okay. And if you were to, if you were to look at it, you know, shift your focus from, you know, into a less historic preservation and more of a, of a continuity of the neighborhood, but not a preservationist viewpoint of trying to see the original structure there. I mean, was that example that she proposed, did that seem, you know, like out of character or scale of, of within that neighborhood? Again, not through a historic preservation viewpoint, but just from a...
If this were not an historic district, I, again, I only saw it briefly, but in general it looked like it would be in proportion. This one and a half story scale to the street, I'm not sure about as I recall the image, that, that it would be within that, within that range. But the forms are ones that are certainly familiar to the neighborhood.
Right, right. Okay. I think that's all the questions I have at, at the moment. Again, thank you for all the work so far on this.
David Jones?
Thank you. So I apologize, I'm, I'm maybe a little slow on the, the historic district itself. And I don't know if, who's the right person to address the que, this question to. What is the, so the, I'm assuming that this, the current status is there's some historic nature to this neighborhood? And are we required under some preservation law to keep it looking a certain way for a certain reason? And? I don't know who to...
No, we are not required to keep it that way. The point that Sharon made is probably the one that's, would impact the most people. If we don't maintain the historic district, then those structures that are contributing in the district would not be eligible for tax credits from the state. So that, that would be a funding source that would not be available to them. Certainly, the district could be delisted if there are a number of structures which are altered so that they're no longer significant, they don't maintain that historic integrity. But we are not required to maintain it.
So it's, it's primarily, it's a, it's a financial conversation that the homeowner has?
Well, it, it's also, it's, you know, there, there's other benefits to having historic, historic district. I mean, there's certainly economic benefits. You know, the state's done a number of studies to show what kind of benefits there are to having historic districts in your community. And then there are the individual benefits to the homeowners if they are able to take advantage of those tax credits. So it's, and it's, you know, it's, it's a matter of pride in some communities to have a historic district and maintain that piece of history that they have in their community.
So if it's okay, could I get the picture, Ms. Mudd's picture again of the proposed house? I just want to follow up again a little bit on what Mr. Marriott's talking about. Yep, that's perfect. Thank you. So, and you can go sit down, you don't have... So I guess this was the question that Mr. Marriott was asking you based on the way that the, the top picture is versus the, the bottom picture. And I'm just trying to understand your comment on the historic nature, the historic value or the preservation of such.
Well, the original building, which you see, is, is what is called a minimal traditional style. And the, in the survey, it was identified as being of historic significance and one of those that are termed contributors in the district. The design down below, of course, that building is gone. It's invis, you know, it's no longer there. So this would be rated now as a non-contributor if this alteration were to happen. So it would, it would be diminishing the count of the contributing structures in the district. And that's what Cheryl was alluding to, there could become a point at which it would be delisted and therefore those who might have invested with other expectations of making use of the, the tax credits would then no longer be available to them. So there's a, there is a challenge there. I mean, is that an attractive house? Yes, that's an attractive house. Is it an historic building anymore? No.
Okay. And so the top picture, with that addition on the back and maintaining that front scape of that house, that, based on your...
No, I would not propose to do that addition the way that's illustrated there.
Well, so let's just pretend that we were, but based on, on that picture, that house would still maintain the conforming factors.
It probably would, yes. Because you can still see the, the, the bulk of the original material is still there and you can still see its, its scale and character. Yes.
And when you say original material, what do you mean?
Oh, the siding, the, the roof, the form of it, the windows. I mean, you can see what the original character of the design of the house was.
And so if, so now regardless of these two pictures, we'll just use that front scape of that top picture, and I owned that house and I wanted to re-site it under these guidelines, what would I need to do?
There, those have been removed from the regulations. Those are only advisory, so you could strip it.
So I could put vinyl up?
Yes, you could.
And how does that conform with the historical nature of that?
It's not recommended. That is not, that is not best practices in terms of preservation.
Would that house still can be a conforming house?
It would depend on how many changes have occurred to it.
Just siding?
It, it's hard to say, possibly.
I guess I'm not understanding the conforming versus non-conforming and why, why that seems to have so much weight or bearing on the recommendations that you're making.
Well, you know, our, one of the objectives was to promote preservation of these buildings and therefore at least to try to keep the scale and character in terms of their form as they were known to be historically along the, along the street. The original guidelines did propose that windows and siding would be subject to review as well and would be preserved. But those have been removed from the priority guidelines category and are now just advisory.
Okay. So I appreciate, and I really, truly, I just, I'm trying to understand conforming and non-conforming and, and what fits in, into each of those. Because I'm certainly not opposed to, to creating or maintaining this historic look. I, I would agree with most all of the speakers in that there, it's unique and it's a very unique part of Arvada. And I, we want to hold that near and dear. I'm just trying to understand conforming versus non-conforming and what's lost in a situation like this.
Well, and since we were only focusing on the things that are priority guidelines, a lot of the information that is now in the advisory guidelines touches on that. It addresses the idea of integrity, that an historic building retain enough of what are called its key character-defining features, which could be its form, its scale, the materials, the windows, the trim, et cetera. And so in terms of preservation, it's preferred that a building retain a very high degree of integrity. Now we're talking about a situation where only very basic things would be preserved, but ideally, hopefully, they would still retain sufficient integrity to continue to be considered contributors.
Okay. And then I think, I don't remember who said this, but somebody said there were 84 homes in the district? Okay. Any idea how many of those are rental homes? You said about 30%? Okay. And then, and I don't know if this is out of order, Mr. Mayor, but I'm just curious by the raise of hand, how many of, of those in the audience own a property in the historic district today? So a good majority of you? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for being non-conforming. Mr., Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, all right, so let's go back. When did the district become registered as a historic, historic district?
1998.
98. And then we were approached by the citizens, which I don't know if it was, I don't recognize the person that was here a couple of years ago, but to do guidelines, right? I just wanted to walk through history because we asked him to come up and do this for us. But let's remember what started this whole adventure, which was...
So we were first approached by a group of representatives from the community about the zoning issue, dealing with the potential for that, if somebody come in and compile lots and build an apartment building or something of that nature. Which would have been allowed under, under the zoning. They also then expressed a desire to have design guidelines to help further preserve the character of the district because, you know, the zoning only takes you so far.
So that happened whatever, four years ago or three years ago, if I recall correctly? How many, I'm gonna, I'm gonna non-conform either. How many folks in this room were involved at that first part? So you, you all were, okay. So I'll be honest, I'm a little frustrated hearing what I hear now, what we talked about four years ago, which was, are you sure you want us to put guidelines that restrict what you can do on your property? And now I'm hearing, well, hey, hold on, I don't want these rules. Now we want different rules. So I just want to make sure I understand that we spent a lot of taxpayer money here to get here tonight? And what I'm hearing is you don't like what we've done or what's been presented. So I was, four years ago, if you all recall, I was concerned of us being overreaching. And I think that was actually even stated tonight. So I'm trying to look now, what do you want from us? What's the outcome? Does anyone know what the outcome should, what's the desired outcome from this? Come on down here, Ms. Mudd. Well, but here's, here's the question. No, I want to ask, because here's the thing, I, I don't know, I'm not hearing that there's a big support of what's being presented. And then, and then I'm a little confused because I heard at the beginning, four years ago, we need to, everyone wants to save everything. And now I'm hearing, well, my house doesn't conform, my house doesn't, my house, my house. And now I'm a little worried. I don't know what we want to do here. Do we want the rules or not? Me, I'm alone, I, but I just would like to get some help.
I think four years ago, 100% of the community wanted rezoning. So we were all involved in that and we all agree with that. Now we don't all agree with the proposed mandatory guidelines.
Do we blame Bob Dyer for that?
But we do all agree with scale and roof style and stuff like that, but maybe not.
Because I do recall us talking about kind of keeping the porch, keeping the pitches, keeping the, the feel of it. But then I think the question becomes is how do we maintain the historic district?
And so, and so that's, I think, where there's some difference in, of opinions.
You can, you can take your drawings there.
They're very moving.
Good. Nancy Ford?
I can understand your confusion, Bob, because I struggle with this myself. I really have no questions other than to say, we either value a historic preservation or we don't. And I think that's what this issue really gets down to. I, you know, I've, I've tried to think of other examples to use. You know, I, I think of the world when we find artifacts, people find artifacts and, you know, people get upset because they want to keep those artifacts instead of bringing them back to the original owners. I think about artifacts that could be, you know, maybe somebody finds an artifact and they don't like the color of it, so they want to change the color of it. It really gets down to whether we feel that historic preservation is a value that we want to have here in Arvada. Do we feel that preserving this neighborhood is going to add a cultural value to Arvada? And I can say that recently on a trip, when I drove through a town that was historic in nature, I have to tell you, I was absolutely thrilled by the town and have talked to many people since. And many people that I talked to say, oh, I'd love to live there. So I, I think, the way I look at this is, you either think of your neighborhood as a jewel because you have the privilege of living in an area that is older and it's different, it's unique, or you don't. I mean, I think that really is where we are at this point. And I'm kind of with you, Bob. All the nitpicking and this design and that design, it's like, look, you either want a historic district or you don't. And honestly, given the fact that we have very few historic districts in Arvada, I would say it's probably an asset to have that district. And to keep it with the, as much integrity as you can possibly keep it, otherwise, why live there? Let's just tear it all down then. If you just want to be near Old Town and walk to Old Town, you know, that's what I'm hearing. Everybody likes to live there and they want to do what they want to do, but it, it just doesn't work that way. You can't have everybody wanting to do what they want to do if you want to keep this historic district and have it be special in Arvada. Have it be something that maybe people are going to want to visit when they get off the train when it comes finally. I mean, it's just a matter of whether you agree with historic preservation or you don't. And I think we can sit up here and argue about all these details forever and ever and get nowhere. What is it that you want to accomplish? Thanks, Bob.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I think that's the fundamental question. What is it we want? When Bob asked, what's the outcome? I think the outcome is a decision ultimately at the end of the process on preserving a historic neighborhood or not preserving a historic neighborhood. Also, I think it's important to think about what, from what viewpoint do we look at a historic district? And I think as Mr. Winter has pointed out in his presentation and Ms. Ray too in her presentation, we look at a historic district from the street scape. We look at what does it look like from the, from the street? And that's why, if I understand it, why we want to preserve at least that first 20 feet of the residents. And it's why we don't want to make the big changes to the front of, of homes where there's, we're saying, yes, it's okay if we need to do some things, we do it toward the back of the lot. So we maintain the view that we have of the historic district. I've heard many, many complaints over the last few years that we don't want to look like North Denver with the squared-off houses in between the historic homes of the district. That's why we started down this, these guidelines after we did the zoning. That helped a lot, but we need to have these guidelines too in order to maintain the historic nature of it. And I think that, you know, that that's the fundamental question. Do we want to have that historic district or do we not? In my judgment, it seems that that's what the neighbors asked us for when they asked for the zoning, for the rezoning, and when they asked for guidelines for the, for the neighborhood. And we cannot look at it from each individual... for the, for the neighborhood. And we cannot look at it from each individual property in the way that we've been, that has been suggested to us by some of the speakers. We have to decide overall, do we want a historic district or not? With that being said, I have one question, Mr. Winter, and I was just wondering if you would comment on the concern that these guidelines make it easier to demolish and rebuild, less burdensome to demolish and rebuild than it is to remodel and maintain the historic home.
Well, of course, that's, that's been a very broad, sweeping statement.
Yeah.
And every situation is unique. I think for several of the examples that we've heard, it'd be interesting to get a better understanding of what's going on. Some of them, we heard, had something, had to do with structural conditions. And so, where you were to put the addition or not really maybe wasn't the question in terms of determining whether or not the building could be preserved. We have tried to, in the guidelines, show several options, not just one form, but several design options for compatible additions to historic buildings. So, if the, if the main building is restorable, reusable, there are design options available for additions, a variety of them. They're, they're available under the design guidelines.
And how would that be determined with these guidelines if a property were, in fact, restorable?
Well, that is, again, since there is no, right now, with demolition not being a part of the regulations, the determination of structural ability and the ability to restore the building from a technical standpoint is totally the owner's. There's nothing that is in the review process that would require any kind of formal criteria for the city to determine whether or not that was feasible.
So, in the example, I think it was Mr. Walsh stating that in his judgment, the property that he inherited recently is not restorable and looks like it would need to be demolished. That would still remain under these guidelines, an individual decision by Mr. Walsh?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Maryott?
Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak again. I asked questions before and I never made any comments. So, I want to make a couple of comments and thank everybody for asking questions, thought of things that I didn't. So, here's a couple, a couple of things, just comments as we go along. I think there's a, you know, originally, the neighborhood came to us because they were fearful of what might happen. And the zoning at that time would have allowed the assemblage of property and quite large buildings, including some commercial. I think convenience stores would have been allowed in the previous zoning. And I think we, we took care of a majority of their concerns by changing the zoning. And I think that was the appropriate thing to do. And I think it was supported virtually by a hundred percent of the neighborhood. I don't think there was so much controversy about that. But when you get to design guidelines, all of a sudden, it's a whole different deal because it's a much further, or it's, it's the next step further in restrictions of private property rights. And I think the question starts to hinge upon, why would you do design guidelines? Are you going to do design guidelines for historic preservation? In other words, to make this kind of a museum or to keep it the same as much as possible for as long as possible? Or do you want to do design guidelines to keep, to keep, as just a further reduction or restriction on what can be done in the areas around there? And to me, I think that, I think those are two really different things. And I think there's certainly property owners within the district who fall very strongly on the historic preservation side, but I think there's a lot who don't. And I think it's really difficult for us as a, as a council, as a legislative body of the city, to impose the types of restrictions that historic preservation does on everybody within that district because it's pretty dramatic restrictions on their property. I think, you know, again, I'm compelled by Ms. Mudd's pictures and her argument. But I think the middle ground there kind of exists because I think what we've heard from all of them at all the public meetings, as well as tonight, is I think the residents, the property owners here, don't want to see what's happened in Berkeley. Now, part of that is, in Berkeley, people tear down a house and build a duplex. Well, the zoning took care of that. You can't do that. But I think they also don't want to see a house torn down and a three-story, flat-roofed, you know, modern-looking house built in its place. I think the basics of these design guidelines do that, but I think there's anomalies within these design guidelines that I think are further restrictions even on that. And those are the, those are the parts that are, that I think are the parts in contention and give me the most heartburn. So, I think things like, you know, the mandatory guidelines that require roof pitches and roof forms like is in the neighborhood, I don't think anybody has any problem with that. I think, you know, restricted to two stories, I think is fine, but the restricted to one and a half stories, unless you happen to be next to one of four two-story houses in the district, to me seems arbitrary. And that's the, that's the point of contention is, is that kind of thing. I think that the, as one of the citizens said, I think it was Nick, said, "If I want a front porch, I have to tear my house down and build another house to build a front porch." I mean, to me, that's kind of a design guideline that maybe is a little out of place when the intention just is, is that houses maintain their front porches. The intention is, "Don't take the front porch off, but gosh, you ought to be able to add one." And so, I guess where I fall on this is maybe a little less on the historic preservation side and maybe on the side of just further restrictions on size, scale, those types of things to help preserve the feel of this area without really trying to go in and rigidly protect historically, the historic preservation of the area. And I don't think it's as simple as us just deciding, "Do we value historic preservation or not?" Or do we, because the flip side would be, "Do we value private property rights or not?" And I think it's, I think it's important that we get this right, and I just don't see how we can impose something on a, not a majority, even a, even a large number of the people within this district, where I think it's probably completely appropriate for us to accept design guidelines that accomplish what most everybody's goal is and seems to get us ninety percent of the way there for everybody and maybe that last ten percent we don't get. But it seems to me that that's so much better than the alternative, which is the alternative, we don't adopt anything and we go with what we've done so far, which is just adopt the zoning that we've done. That leaves open the possibility that somebody removes a house and builds a three-story, flat-roofed, kind of modern architecture house. I think everybody in the audience would like to not see that happen. So, we have to, I feel like we have to accept some design guidelines. But, but man, it's really hard to take, you know, Ms. Mudd, for instance, and say, "You've got to build an addition into your backyard" when they don't want to. So, I would, I would suggest, my input to the, to the staff would be and to the consultant would be that we really focus in on those design guideline elements that the vast majority of people are accepting of, which is maybe not so much historic preservation, although can contain some elements of historic preservation. But, but that zeros in on what, what, what the vast majority of people really can agree on, which is no three-story houses, but two stories, okay. And no shed roofs and no flat roofs, but pitch, you know, pitched roofs, either gable or hip pitched roofs, things like that would be my advice or what I would like to see, you know, go, move, move forward.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, you know, reflecting back, and I think Mr. Maryott said it spot on. I think when I look over the last four years of us talking about it, I, I thought it was more of the character of the neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's what I took away from it, was keeping that character. And I think Ms. Mudd's home and even the other two gentlemen that spoke, I mean, you're keeping the character of the community there. And there is hardship on some of these properties, and I don't want that to be taken away where somebody's just trying to improve, again, I believe, the character of the community. I think we all want to preserve what we can, but I think just sometimes it's just not going to happen. That's, that's what I learned over the last four years in this whole journey. That's why I was a little confused on, on this. Also, I heard the word mandatory quite a few times. I thought when we talked about this last, we didn't really talk about too much mandatory. I think we talked a few things, like keep the porch, keep the pitch, and that was about it. Is that true or?
All right. So, the hundred-page document that we had come to you with at the workshop contains, oh, I don't know how many guidelines, a lot of guidelines. And there were twelve that have been suggested being the mandatory or the priority guidelines. And by that, what we mean is, there's a review for compliance with those that's mandatory. The logistics of exactly what happens with those, you know, we've yet to determine. The way we work it in Old Town is that there are criteria contained in the land development code by which a waiver can be granted to a design guideline. And it's very common for waivers to be granted to design guidelines. And if we were to employ a system like that here, the review would be mandatory for those twelve guidelines, but there's a potential to have a waiver to a guideline if the circumstances warrant it.
Okay. And, and, you know, oh, I lost my train of thought. Guess it's that night. Huh? I can't remember. So, it must have escaped to me. Thank you.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, I think Ms. Drake just answered the question I had, that if these guidelines are adopted, and by the way, they do address those four major elements, mass, scale, placement, and the porch characteristics. But if, if the guidelines are in place, there is a process for review, for exceptions with the, with the design guidelines to make things fit. So, it's not just one size fits all, but the opportunity for people to request variances.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Around that? I'm sorry, Mayor. But in Ms. Mudd, since we have a use case in front of us now, I mean, would, would something like Ms. Mudd's be an exception? I mean, if it was, I know there's a lot in depth to look, but at the twelve criteria-
So, it very well could. I don't know if you're familiar with Tammy Fautinno's house. She has two houses on Yukon Street. She had one house that was very similar to Mrs. Mudd's, where it was a side gable, it wasn't a front gable. And due to the structural circumstances in that, there were, there were waivers granted to the guidelines. And now she has a front-facing gable home with a, it's one and a half stories.
Two beautiful homes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, you were here when this was all plotted, so.
Love you, man. Thank you, faithful Indian god. Cheryl, it seems to me we've gotten away from the reason for this workshop. You've got eight priority guidelines that you said you hadn't received consensus or agreement or whatever on. And you're asking for council direction or to proceed with the adoption. And you've got October the second, 2017. How are you going to, who's going to decide the wording of these eight guidelines that you brought up as being, being not agreed to or not consensus? And I, I don't think very many of these have anything to do. To me, preservation and historical differences of buildings is a different topic than guidelines for design. Design means that somebody's going to alter the building or, or at least maintain it in its present conditions. What, what, what should I decide tonight in order to give you a direction? Because I, I don't know. You know, you've got the comments, the community comments and the staff recommendation, but somebody's got to prepare a final, final document to be voted on.
So, what we would, we would like your input on is those positions that we've taken in the memo that we presented to you. If you would like to tell us, you know, on guideline 2.47, scrap it or keep it or modify it in some way, those are the kinds of modifications that we would come back to you with in October.
So, if I say, "Fine, staff, I agree with your recommendation," or "I don't oppose your recommendation," regardless of public comment or regardless of the neighborhood consensus, then that's what you will write for us to approve or disapprove at some future date.
I think I'd like a little bit clearer direction than public comment because I think we've had public comment on both sides of the issues.
You can't, government's never able to solve every individual situation.
Right. But we're, we're here to find out what direction the council would like us to go in. So, you know, whichever direction that is, if you have some guidance for us at this point, then we'll certainly incorporate that.
Well, then, shouldn't we discuss all eight of these to decide which one we agree with and which one we don't?
We could certainly do that.
I'm a little bit confused how you're going to write a document for me to vote yes or no on at some future date if you don't know, you know, what the council's going to adopt.
Absolutely.
It's kind of, it's kind of silly for you to write a document to, to be voted on if you know that we're not going to approve one of them.
Understanding that we're not here to take final action on anything tonight.
Understand that.
We certainly would like very clear direction in moving forward.
Well, we haven't decided on these eight items.
Correct.
We've talked about a lot of other things. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm confused as what I was supposed to, giving direction means sort of agreeing or disagree, I think.
Well, I, you know, again, we're not going to make final decision tonight, but I think it would be helpful to staff if we would, you know, if we want to go through each individual one, we can certainly do that in terms of, "Yeah, I'm okay with this," or "I'm not okay with this." Let me give you some sense of where I am and all this stuff.
Yeah, and I haven't before. I mean, I've read, I've read them. And that's what I was concentrating on. And unfortunately, the way this meeting has gone tonight, we didn't really zero in on those.
Well, the, I mean, part of it is because we've been talking the philosophy of, are we going for historical preservation or are we trying to make this a, you know, very nice-looking, I think, characteristic, you know, that maintains the character of that neighborhood, but perhaps makes it a little bit more livable than if you go strictly with the historical. And that's, you know, because I think that, one problem I worry about is if there's so many restrictions on this that folks say, "Well, you know, I can't afford to renovate this, so I'm just going to turn it into a rental." You know, so you've got that concern, that potential of, you know, gee, this is really a great location, but, you know, to try to maintain it or to try to make it livable for myself just isn't logical or possible. I think the, the important things we've got to agree upon, and because I think it's consistent with the neighborhood wishes, we don't want three-story, we don't want flat roofs, period, in this area. You know, there might, there's other areas where that may be appropriate, but no way, no how in this neighborhood. I would like to see, from my perspective, some loosening of the guidelines to permit more front porches because I agree with the statement, you know, not only, you know, maybe air conditioners are bad for, for neighborhoods, but garage door openers have been, too. Everybody just goes in. And so, to the extent we can, and because that's one of the really neat things about this neighborhood, are all the front porches. And too, you know, I don't want to see a situation where you've got to tear down the house to be able to put in a front porch. We've got to figure out some flexibility with that to make that a little bit better. The, obviously, the pitched roofs and that concept, I'm comfortable with up to two stories. And I think that that allows some repurposing while still maintaining character. If maybe not true historical exactness, but certainly, you know, the opportunity to, to make it livable, maintain character, and be able to have houses that people are going to want for many, many more years to come. So, those are, those are the top priorities for me. It's this, moving the massing to the back, I think, has some potential unintended negative consequences in terms of impacts upon neighbors. So, those are, I guess those are my thoughts. So, what, Mr. Devon, what's going to be the best way for us to work through this to give you all what you need tonight?
Well, let me ask, Cheryl, you want to go through, read through the priority guidelines and get a sense?
We could do that. I think, I think what it really does come down to-
You know, I see you waving back there, but we're not taking any more. I mean, this is not a public hearing tonight. We've, I've given folks an opportunity to talk, but for our discussion purposes, this is a workshop. We're rolling up our sleeves and working this aspect of it now.
Can I just make one comment?
Sir, no, thank you. I apologize. I took lots of public comment, but there's gonna be lots of opportunity for more public comment when we finally get this in front of us. Right now, we're just trying to work through what we, as a council, want to do in terms of moving forward.
Where's, I'm an owner. Where's the document, the eight items you're talking about? I don't have a copy. There's nothing on the website. Where is it?
Cheryl, can you say where the, I mean, what the...
I'm a homeowner. I don't even know what it is. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, there is a handout that actually was on the work, on the website, that has all of the guidelines, that points out which items we don't have consensus on, and provides community comments as well as staff's recommendations.
I'm not one of the documents today on the website.
Well, I could certainly provide you with a copy.
Does anybody else have that?
I think we're getting ready to make it clear what the items are. I think that's what he's trying to say, that I think he's unclear as to what the old ones are, the document, you know.
Okay.
So...
Just to clarify, eight items, the red box items, that's what I was looking for. I don't have a document that shows these red box items.
That's correct. That was, no, we could get you that. That was in the presentation tonight. No, the red boxes were only illustrated in, they were in the presentation tonight.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about. That one, it seems like everybody's focused on the red box items. There's no document on it. And that's public cast.
That's correct. That was, that was strictly illustrating, putting in as illustrations for...
I was gonna think by the city that brought forth, but our public doesn't know.
Sir, I don't think that's accurate, but let's...
It is.
The...
And the items added, we don't know.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you one last time, please. This is time for council discussion with our staff, okay? You'll have an opportunity at an upcoming public hearing when we take public testimony on this matter. Okay, sir, thank you.
So, I think it comes down to, the critical issue is the approach on historic preservation. If, if what is more essential is just the character, not necessarily the historic aspect of it, then I think that we could clearly go through these items and eliminate anything that really is there to preserve the historic character. Because I think some of these, if you're looking at, for example, preserving the original porch or stoop, that's preservation. So if the goal is to just have porches, large porches, we want to encourage those, we could certainly modify this guideline. This probably would become an advisory guideline rather than a priority guideline. So, and there are three of them that have to do with porches. So that would, that would cover those items.
Okay, well, let's cover those quickly here. Yes?
Staff, could we just pull this up off the public agenda and just put the, starting with the eight up there? Can we just do that? Because it is on the website. Yeah, I know. Just, if we could just go to the website and pull it up there. So as we go through them, people can read them through the screen. Do you mind, Mayor?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Cheryl, what was up there was what I was talking about.
What's that?
What you had up there just a minute ago, what I was talking about, where you asked for directions from the council.
That memo was in the council packet. That, I think the confusion here tonight is that this document, that there were screenshots included from this document that you have, no text was changed, no graphics were changed, other than drawing a red box around things to illustrate points that we wanted to focus on.
Got it.
And that, that, the document with the red boxes was not included in the council packet. That was just included in the presentation tonight.
But Cheryl, which eight items do you want us to look over, then? The ones that we just had up on the screen?
Um...
We're not talking about the red boxes. I don't care about the red boxes. But I wanna care about are the eight things you want us to look at.
Outlined in the memorandum are the items that we would like your direction on.
So, starting with 2.47?
2.47, preserve the original porch. 2.51, if replacing a porch feature is necessary, it should match the design, scale, materials, and character of those seen traditionally. 2.55, a new addition should respect the mass and scale of the original structure. 2.58, new construction should respect solar access and privacy impacts on neighboring properties. 4.8, design a new residential building to incorporate heights and proportions that reference those on historic buildings in the surrounding context. 4.10, construct new building features to reflect the mass, scale, and form of traditional residential buildings. 4.14, provide a front porch to define the entry and orient it to the street. 4.26, locate accessory buildings to reinforce surrounding historic development patterns. And then there are the two general topics, dealing with demolition and having identical guidelines for contributing and non-contributing structures and new construction.
Cheryl, can I suggest maybe we just do them one at a time, and I'll be happy to start off on the 2.47, preserve the original porch. I think the way that is, is, by my eyes, is fine. I wouldn't make any changes to that one at all. The next one, however, which also refers to porches, which is 2.51, the only thing about that one, I think, that makes it difficult is the word "not larger" in there. That it takes somebody who has just a stoop and doesn't allow them to make a front porch. And I think that's the, that's kind of the historic preservation look at it versus just the kind of character look at it. If it were me, I would just take the word "not larger" out of there, which I think would give people the flexibility to, you know, change their front porch, but they still have to have a front porch that matches, you know, kind of what there should be. How does everybody else feel about those two, at least those first two?
I agree with John.
Okay, Don?
I've got no problem.
No problem with staff recommendation.
Great. David?
I agree with what John has said.
Mark?
So, are we talking about just taking out the two words, "not larger"?
Yes, on 2.51.
On 2.51.
Yeah, I guess that's fine. I'm okay with that.
Nancy?
And why do you wanna take those out?
So we can have, people who have stoops could put in a, could put in a porch.
Yeah. So, I think, Nancy, one of the anomalies here is, if you were to have a little stoop on the front of your house, and you wanted a front porch, I think you'd have to tear your house down and build a new, non-contributing structure there to be able to have a front porch on the front of it.
Why would you have to tear the house down?
Well, I, I think it says you can't build, if this, if this is passed as is, you can't build a front porch larger than what you have.
Like if you buy two concrete...
So if you have a stoop...
I think what they're saying is that if you can't make, if you've got a contributing structure, and you can't make your porch larger, and you want a larger porch, if you totally remove the structure, you're not dealing with a contributing structure anymore. You're dealing with new construction.
I mean, granted, that's a, that's a gross, you know, maybe, I don't know that that situation's really real. But it also, you know, the taking out the "not larger" just gives people the flexibility to...
Well, keep in mind also, we have zoning restrictions in place. And a lot of these homes are built pretty much up to the front setbacks, or even closer than the existing front setbacks that are allowed under the Land Development Code. So they're also gonna have that challenge as well, that they may not be able to enlarge their front porch due to zoning restrictions.
I'm gonna make it really easy for the council. So, my recommendation personally would be that I am a historic preservationist, and I think that keeping this area, historic preservation area, is a tremendous advantage for the city overall. So any recommendation that would keep this area a historic area, I would be for it. So all the details, I would leave to someone like Norrie, who is an expert in historic preservation. And if he recommends doing something, I would go along with you since you're the expert.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it sounds like a majority are in favor of taking out the words "not larger" in 2.5, leave 2.47 the way it is. 2.55, new addition should respect...
Before we go there, can we go to 4.14? It also speaks to the front porches.
Sure, we can go out of order.
You're not conformist. 4.14...
And I don't have any problem with 4.14 the way it is. I think, I mean, I don't know if anybody else does, but I think the way it is, is fine.
No problem.
Okay, so there's three of eight. Done, we're making some progress.
There we are.
See? It was worth it.
Good job. Take out the easy ones first. Next. Now, can we go to 2.55?
2.55.
I really think we need to adapt it to 2.47, because I don't think it's gonna be good, John. I think the...
Sir?
2.47 does not allow...
Sir?
Sorry.
Please.
My apologies.
Okay, 2.55. This is where it speaks to the one and a half-story structures as the limitation at the front of the house. I've spoken in favor of allowing up to two.
Yeah, and I would have to agree. I think 2.55 and 2 point, or 4.8, both, I would allow a two-story building, not a three, not a two and a half, but a, but a two, anywhere in the district, because I think that only within the context of having a two-story house next to you is so restricted. It whittles 84 lots down to six, or eight, or 10, or something. It just seems, seems like that's, you know, so restrictive. So between those two, I would allow up to two stories, not just restrict it to one and a half stories.
And you're talking about within the front, all the way up to the front setback?
Yeah, I think, and again, I refer to Ms. Mudd's example. I think, you know, she, that's an example of, of, yes, what I would allow.
So basically, if that were the case, it would be what we often refer to as just pop tops allowed anyplace within this district.
I think, I think you'd allow, you know, building heights that allow a full second story anywhere in the setback, and without, yeah. But I mean, I wouldn't, I don't think you would allow a pop top, that's a two-story pop top on top of a, on top of a one.
But if I'm understanding that, if, if we adopted it in the way that has been suggested, it would allow for pop tops anyplace in the, in the district up to two stories, and to the front of the, of the existing residence.
Yeah. Where are you on that, Mr. McGough?
Gotta think about it for just a minute. I think that, well, I'll just say, it's, it's really problematic when we start dealing with pop tops anyplace within this district, particularly because I think it would be, first of all, a desirable place to have pop tops because of its location to Old Town and to commuter rail. And I think it would be, well, just economically, it would, I think there would be an incentive to do this, and it would create a lot of problem for, we've pretty well agreed on mass, scale, setbacks, et cetera. And this would seem to throw all that away. So I have a great deal of difficulty with it, and perhaps I'll listen to some of the other discussion and give you my thoughts then.
Nancy, I know you're a no. Mr. Howard?
No. I agree, Mr. McGough.
Well, I struggle with this one. I mean, I understand what Mr. McGough is saying. But I, you know, I look at, again, I'm just referencing one example of a, of a homeowner's idea about how to make, how to make their home fit within this district. I just, I struggle with, you know, the overreaching regulations on what they could do on that property, as long as in it looked, or it fit, the neighborhood. So I would, I think I would have to lean to Mr. Marriott and his comments on that. So that's a tough one.
Gee, we got a three-three. And again, this is not a binding decision tonight.
No, it's not. It's just, I shouldn't have went last.
Do I do one half each way?
Well, actually, I'll tell you what I was thinking. I agree with Mr. McGough, what he's saying. And I also agree with what John started with. Because I thought, well, maybe there's a middle ground. Maybe you could do the half-story if you're one story. And then if you're a half, one and a half, you can go to a two. So not, not unless I pop it and make a full two-story. But, but the issue I was starting to think of was setbacks. What is the average setbacks on the sides of the houses? Do you know?
Average, existing average setback?
Yeah, five feet.
Well, that's the zoning requirement, but I, there are a number of structures closer than, than five feet to the property line. And so we often run into building code issues when somebody wants to put a second story on, but they can't put openings there because they're too close to the property line, that sort of thing. So there are a number of considerations that may prevent doing this sort of work anyway.
So if they were to do a second story, the five-foot, whatever, setback might not allow them, because they're too close?
That's a possibility.
Because I think there's one about solar, that we're talking about solar in here, or is that one of the eight? No?
Right. There was a big concern originally in this, when we undertook this project, about privacy, for just, for people, you know, building a two-story structure and looking down into backyards, as well as solar access. And we understand that concern, that, that is a big concern. However, it's a very complicated issue. And for the purposes of this project, we think, coming by the actual standards, is, is outside of the scope of the project. So that's something that we could look at as part of the Land Development Code revision, if that's something council wants us to do. But we think that at this point, we would make that an advisory guideline.
And then if they're, so if they did a second story, so we have some setback issues, but also, there's a percentage of the land that they can consume with the building, right?
Lot coverage, correct.
Lot coverage, which is, what is that percentage? Thirty-five percent? Forty percent?
I want to say it's...
Well, it depends what zone, it depends what zone, though.
Yeah, I want to say it's, it's...
No?
No, it's, I believe it's between 30 and 40 percent, depending on if it's a one or two-story.
That's what I thought, okay.
Rob, could double-check that for us?
I was just wondering if, I mean, the zone alone might not allow some of that happening, is what I'm gathering.
Wouldn't necessarily happen everywhere.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't want to have a document that contradicts our zone either. I'm assuming there'd have to be some sort of relationship there.
Bob, I think the way this works, this is a further restriction on the zone district. This isn't a relief from the zone district. So it's kind of, Cheryl, is that correct? It's a one-way deal, not a two-way deal. In other words, if, if the design guidelines were to allow two stories anywhere, they still have to comply with the setbacks. You can't, just because it's allowed, doesn't mean now you don't have to comply with the setbacks. So there may be places where you couldn't do a two-story, even though the design guidelines would allow it, the zone won't.
Or the building code.
But would they come to some, for, ask for some waiver adjustment? That's what I would be worried about. What's the likelihood of us saying yes?
So there's, so there's some different approaches. I mean, if we're talking about the guidelines, we could structure it again, so that we have criteria by which a guideline could be waived. If you're talking about zoning criteria, so setbacks, if somebody wants to put a porch in their front, and they're already built to the front setback line, then there's a variance process that they could go through, through the board of adjustment. And that, you know, having a guideline that encourages the front porch, that might be a good rationale for allowing a variance.
So I think you have a split council on this.
You haven't committed yet. We don't know. You haven't committed yet.
We didn't commit anything. We're just giving them directions, so when they come back, we don't sit on this one for a long time.
Tell us some direction.
So I'm just not gonna say anything.
The lot coverage maximum is 40 percent.
Okay, maximum, okay. Well, all right.
Okay. So I think the direction to staff is that we need more information to be able to try to get to a decision on, on that one.
Could I just add, though? I, I listened carefully to what other people said, and I'm not convinced that we should have two-story, we should have pop-ups in effect, anyplace that zoning allows within the district. So I would be a no on this in terms of my recommendation for.
I had you as a no.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to interject again. A majority of people that started this, that made the request to council was more interested in preservation than they were designing new structures or adding on any structures.
I don't know that that's true.
That's the way I understood it. I agree with what Mr. Pfeiffer said a while ago.
Well, which is character, not necessarily, not necessarily the historical designation.
I think that's probably the right approach, is maybe we ought to look at that in more depth. I'm going to suggest in, to keep us moving along, that 2.58, which is the solar access, I think you even made the recommendation that that become advisory and that that gets looked at a little more carefully in the land development code, maybe?
That's correct.
And I would agree with that.
Everybody's agreeing with that? Good.
Yeah, that's the right.
Hey, hey, seven, no.
Right where to go. And then 4.10, I think I would absolutely keep that. I think that speaks to one of the core issues here, which is no flat roofs, roof form and kind of some definition of the pitches.
And I'd just like to point out, there is one flat roof structure in the district. But we have, we have the approach that if the historic contributing structure already has.
Sure.
Pitch that's less than, it would be appropriate to keep it. And I think that actually the language in the petition is consistent with allowing this, this range of 612 to 1212, I believe.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I think, I think what you have in 410 is kind of one of the central things to the desire for these design guidelines, and I think that absolutely ought to be there. I wouldn't, wouldn't.
Everybody's good with 410? Yeah, that's part of the whole discussion. That's part of the whole, that's the two-story, yeah. That's 2.55 and 48. We'll have, okay, we've done 414, right?
Yep.
426?
And, and I think 426 is appropriate, the way that's written in the design guidelines as well. I mean, again, that, that speaks towards, you know, garages need to be at the alley, or if they're not, if they're, if they're going to be loaded from the front, that they ought to be set back from the front wall, the main structure, which takes care of that garage door being the bane of neighbors knowing each other. So I would, I mean, I wouldn't have any problem with that one either.
Okay, general topics, anything you need from us on that?
I don't think so. I think this answers our questions.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, members of the public, for being here. I know it's frustrating, you'd like to have more of a dialogue with us. There'll be more opportunity when we get to the public hearing process, but I think the discussion tonight was useful. I appreciate all the input from citizens, from our consultants, from staff, from, from council. Let's take a recess and, and then reconvene.
Is to promote mixed-use transit-oriented development specifically. And to really encourage and plan for mixed-use development around the stations. So in this slide here, the green areas around each of the station is really the quarter-mile. And the orange ring, the outer ring of that, is the half-mile. And sort of by convention, a TOD is really defined as that half-mile radius. Or something related to about a 15-minute walk to the station. So listed here in this slide is really sort of the character elements that were identified in the Transit Framework Plan. So starting over on the east at the Sheridan Station, it was really seen as an employment-focused type of station. The Old Town Station was really kind of envisioned as not only the heart of Arvada, but really the heart of the whole G-line. So it would have the historic character of Old Town, residential, employment, and entertainment uses. The Arvada Ridge Station was always envisioned as residential and an education focus. And then the Ward Road Station, Wheat Ridge is really defining it as a very much of an employment kind of focused station with supporting residential. So to bring RTD into this, this is really to point out that the Old Town and the Ward Road Stations are really seen initially on opening day, and also into the future as the major stations. And the little graphic on the right just sort of shows the proportion of daily transit ridership for our three stations. So Old Town would seem to have the most ridership, daily ridership, followed by Sheridan, and then Arvada Ridge.
What if we added Ward Road into that? What do you think the mix would be?
It actually has a higher ridership, and so it's like with Old Town and Ward Road.
So comparable to?
Yeah. So there are some trends. So as we look back in the past 10 years, as I mentioned, you know, we had the recession and our building boom that we have now that's focused on residential. Looking into the future, there are some definite trends that we can sort of plan for, anticipate in the next 10 years or so. The first one is clearly with land use. Millennials and baby boomers are interested in the same type of walkable community. They do like to have access to transit. We're also seeing parking reductions due to transit and other modes, such as bicycles. And then we're also seeing some changes that are really impacting building form in terms of construction. The clearest place of floors, for instance. The use of steel, for instance, in residential, rather than just having wood-framed construction. For transportation, well, we're seeing some differences in how people are using bicycles to get to stations. And certainly, car sharing and bike sharing is important. And then we've been assured that autonomous cars are going to be coming. We don't know when, but at some point. And then also smart city, there's going to be some implications for that. But what's rather interesting is because we've been focusing on TOD for eight to 10 years or so, we're starting to see quite a bit of our TOD opportunities within that half-mile already being completed. So to look further out into the one-mile radius is really what a lot of cities are really doing now. So if we look at the TOD corridor again, but instead expand this out to the one-mile radius, this is really what the Urban Land Institute and other groups are also saying is really approximately a five-minute bike ride to a station. And this is kind of the next generation of TODs that cities are really starting to take a look at, as that half-mile area is getting built up. So if we look within this area, you can see the box there that approximately 26,000 Arvada residents live within one mile of these four stations. So that's approximately 23% of the Arvada population. So if we look into what's also in that area, we can see some of our commercial corridors: Ralston, Wadsworth, Sheridan, which has sort of aging commercial centers. They're also within that one-mile area. So to quickly go over the Transit Framework Plan, it was approved in 2007, and it was appended to the comprehensive plan. We had considerable community input with stakeholder groups, a steering committee, and public workshops. And through that process, these are the principles that were really identified in the plan: to have a defined center, to have a mix of uses, to have an active 18-hour place where possible, to have it pedestrian-oriented, to have moderate-to-higher-density development, which would transition into adjacent neighborhoods, to manage parking, and also to have sustained public leadership in plan implementation. Now, the Framework Plan also identified 10 implementation strategies, and they're listed on these two slides. So to quickly go through these, we've adopted the station area plan, we have dedicated staff for implementation. And with zoning, we've gone considerably through quite a bit of the process to change our zoning, but we also have to kind of take a look at some zoning tweaks and modifications through our land development code update. I'd also want to point out that the urban renewal plan for Old Town basically uses the TOD concept from the Framework Plan as the basis for that. Corridor strategy is sort of hinted at, but not overly developed through the Framework Plan, so that's why it has a lighter checkmark here. We are continuing to explore public finance mechanisms. We include station area plans in the SIP programs. We implement, we are implementing old and new town parking strategies. We've completed the transit hub. We have an ongoing relationship with Adams County and Wheat Ridge, talking about transit-oriented development and connections to the stations. And we are continually forging public-private partnerships. So we're going to go on to the individual stations right now, and I'm going to turn this over.
Hi, I'm Adam Maxwell. I'm your city traffic engineer. This is the Sheridan Station area. You can see the quarter-mile and half-mile rings presented earlier. This is the employment TOD is the strategy here, to provide a range of employment opportunities within an easy walk of the station. Also provide for transitioning from existing heavy industrial uses to cleaner, high-density employment uses. Part of the vision is to also provide more opportunities for employment uses in the Square Lake area. While there is a minor residential component, it's encouraged, but as a supporting use. Part of the vision also is to provide linkages, linking stations to regional trail systems and pedestrian connections in the area. This really shows the concept of the Sheridan Station. The density changes from commercial on the south side, that's large format, continuing north across the railroad tracks from an employment flex industrial to a mixed-use. That mixed-use is that small residential component, more like live-work units, if you will. This next slide is showing the urban design, the public spaces, really the feature elements are listed. So if you look on Sheridan, there's just a red square there at Sheridan and West 60th is also at the Ralston Road in Sheridan where it says "feature elements." The vision needs to be special landscaping features, or improved signing, or something of that nature to let you know you have entered the Sheridan TOD location. It also shows some dash lines, if you will, kind of traveling through the center of the site to say that it's a pedestrian priority street. So while it is an employment center, we're reminded that this is folks that are traveling here on bikes and other means, and will be walking through this area. This slide is intended to show you some circulation that's from the site. It's important to note the pedestrian links that the folks would be using to cross Sheridan at West 60th Avenue, as well as further to the south down at Ralston and Sheridan. This is from the older plan from 2007, so it does show connectivity across the railroad tracks with an arrow. North-south, that was originally intended to be a pedestrian elevator or something that would go across from there, but Sheridan Road has been improved, and we'll talk about that a little bit later for those pedestrians. It's important to note that on the east side of this site at 58th and Tennyson, we're showing those pedestrian links over to the Highland Hill Regional Park, as well as there would be pedestrian and bike paths along this corridor, especially along the boundaries of it, if you will. One of the challenges to this location is the floodway. Arvada Public Works Department is working with Urban Drainage to look at the limits of this floodway map, to see if there are options to revisit the boundaries. The gauging station for this is up near Golden, and there are opportunities to look at flow in this area and work with Urban Drainage and FEMA to see if there's opportunities to reduce this floodway, thereby making a more developable site.
Yeah, when we had the big flooding, this site didn't flood at all, did it?
I'm honestly pretty new here, so I don't know. Mr. Dougherty, you might be able to answer that for us? Mr. Pat Dougherty?
No, I did not.
Yeah. And that was a major flood. Yeah. Okay.
So opportunities to have that floodway revisited, to ensure that the boundaries shown are correct and prudent, and are being pursued by public works staff. Again, looking at the same area, of course, these are some developments that have come through with simply storage in 2014, 5280 Armory in 2015, and some expansion of the Wanco in 2016. This also shows working with our friends at Adams County that there is an industrial complex as part of that development. Some proposed opportunities for transit-oriented development, in addition to those that have already come in are shown here in red. Some infill could occur on the south side of West 60th Avenue. And then the large yellow area that says potential TOD, approximately 26 acres, of course, that's related to what we can do with the floodplain. Something that's important to note here is that as this comes in, it's noted as an important intersection improvement, but that red asterisk, if you will, that's shown at Ralston Road and Sheridan is an important intersection improvement that would be some pretty significant improvements there to the traffic signal and the east side of the roadway to provide connectivity between Sheridan and Tennyson to extend Ralston Road along the south side of the site. That's the future roadway connection that's noted.
I have a quick question. Well, where Super Credit Union is? So you still think that's an infill redevelopment opportunity? I'm sure they'd love to see that on the map. Just because they just remodeled and added that whole new building and everything, it's that just, what's the thought process behind having that highlighted?
I'm not sure on this one. Do you know, Loretta?
There's some potential, maybe. And again, we're looking for opportunities to kind of see how there can be some sort of densification. So if parking was structured, you know, there could be another building added on there. There's really very few opportunities for TOD development, so we're trying to capture all those that could potentially have another building perhaps squeezed onto a site.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy.
So these red areas, then, when we say potential TOD, are we talking about residential? Or could...
They could have a residential element. It would be a minor element. It's intended to be an employment center, so if there was a residential element, we're thinking, you know, the live-work spaces, if you will, where you work below and live above.
But for the most part, are we focused on bringing in business into this area?
Yes, ma'am. This is the employment center, so if there was a residential component, it's as this infill occurs, but it's not the intent of this to be a residential area. It wouldn't be, not discussed, but the intent is employment. Yes, ma'am.
And I had a question, because in the document, it talked about how the Old Town Station would support the other stations, Sheridan being one of them. So in terms of employment in this particular area of the city, have we ever done any studies on average income to see whether the employees who work in this area would benefit from the housing in Old Town?
We haven't really done a study, per se. We kind of know what the incomes are in that area. I think that in terms of someone living in another station, working at a different location, like for instance here, that really is admirable. It's a goal. As in terms of tying it really to incomes, we haven't really looked at that. Interesting question, though.
Thank you for your patience with me. I've joined the city recently, and just getting caught up to speed on some of the history is, it's been pretty interesting. So thanks for your patience today, tonight. This is the existing zoning. This group is looking for their zoning flexibility that would be supportive of a transit-oriented development. Options for some minor revisions to the industrial zoning through the land development code update are being investigated to support maybe a little less of industrial use and more of commercial and office, again with that light, very light residential component. This slide is showing you some of the trails and roads that are in here. This is the completed project, so West 60th Avenue has some new sidewalk and Cheryl's for bike lane sharing there. Bike lanes and sidewalks were added on that new bridge. I previously mentioned that in the 2007 plan showed right there, about in the center of the Sheridan Station, that there may be a pedestrian connection over the train tracks. That was, I guess, set to the side, if you will, and a more feasible alternative was done early on to the Sheridan Bridge as part of the improvements to get better sidewalks and bike lanes in now. There are existing bike routes to this station and wayfinding through the neighborhoods. This next slide shows some additions that are, as part of this vision, more parks being added, again showing that desired trail connection across. That dash line is about the Ralston Road extension alignment, so that would be a new arterial road between Tennyson and Sheridan. And then provide the open space buffer on the south side of that. It's important to note that the parks are very important to the community, and this would provide connectivity to the parks, having bike lanes and such all the way around the site, and continuing bike routes to stations and other trails. As we mentioned, the floodplain is a major barrier at this location. I know Mr. Dougherty's working at a pretty good pitch to engage with those folks at Urban Drainage to see what those options are. The timing of when that map revision could occur is pretty important. It does affect the timing for the site and what that zoning may or may not be, or what the impacts of that floodway would be on this development. We know that Ralston and Sheridan Boulevard today, as this says, is in a failing condition, but what that really means is there's a long wait there, as we know during the peak hours in the morning and the evening rush hour. And so there's definitely some improvements that could be done as part of this project to alleviate that, and we can work with our friends at the Colorado Department of Transportation at that location. As mentioned here, the pedestrian bridge over the tracks was not a realistic option, so improvements were made to the Sheridan Bridge instead to get out in front of this project, so that we did have that pedestrian connectivity already in place, if you will, in the perimeter. It currently would be difficult to access this station without finalizing some bicycle trail connections. As mentioned previously, some more flexible zoning is needed for a wider range of uses, so staff is looking at the land development code. Multijurisdictional relationships and agreements are needed. We do have dialogue with our friends at Adams County, as well as the state and sister agencies. And we do expect that this particular station, because being an employment center, the fact that it does need some pedestrian connectivity to some sidewalks with Ralston Street being of particular interest to alleviate some traffic issues, and with the proposed discussions for changing our floodplain limits, this development can take some time. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McGough.
Yes, thank you. I have a question on the Sheridan Station. Since it is, you know, the emphasis is on employment in the area, the employment center there really extends over to the east side of Tennyson to Wanco on the far east, but there are a lot of other manufacturing facilities along Tennyson. And then to the west of Sheridan, there's a lot of employment. Within the vision and the new visions, are there envisioned connections to get people under Sheridan, over Sheridan, over to Tennyson? I mean, each is more than a quarter-mile away, I mean, as an employment center. Or are we just dealing with the employment center between Sheridan, or close to Sheridan, really, because Tennyson is a little ways away?
So my...
Are there any connections envisioned?
Yes, sir. The connection... There is envisioned connections across there. Part of that vision has already been completed with West 60th Avenue having improved sidewalks, crosswalks and things.
But how would a person get to the employment opportunities that are west of Sheridan and below 60th, down in that industrial area? Something envisioned?
I'm not certain what may be envisioned on a larger scale. Loretta might be able to speak to that.
Just wondering if that's in the future vision.
I think that's something that we'll have to take a look at more. In term, Sheridan, of course, is a barrier to pedestrians. It's wide, it's busy. There are problems with getting, you know, having pedestrians, of course, walk by the tracks. There's issues with that. There's really not very much in private property above the tracks, so there's really very little opportunity for accessways, which was one of the problems with the pedestrian bridge. There was really no place to land it. If you could land it, it was even hard to get to it, so it really wasn't viable. So that is one of the challenges, and I think that is something that we'll have to look forward to, because we do want to make that catchment area for employment as large as possible to really make this station successful.
Okay. Thank you.
Sarah Washburn with Park and Urban Design. I'll be talking to you soon about Old Town. But I wanted to go back to this slide to address Mr. McGough's question about trail connectivity from the regional perspective. We are looking at the future of continuing a north-side parallel trail to Clear Creek Trail to accomplish some of that connection from essentially the junction of Ralston Creek Trail with Clear Creek Trail around the vicinity of Gold Strait Park, working with Adams County, working with Highland Hills, to create that connection northward towards Clear Creek Park, which could also eventually access the transit station through Tennyson. So I wanted to be able to point that out to you.
Okay, that takes care of the trail connections. So wait for the employment connections. I just want to express my hope that that's part of the future vision.
Exactly.
How we enlarge that employment area.
Good evening, Council. So I am here, it's Maureen Fair with Urban Renewal, and I'm here to talk about the next two stations, the Old Town Station and the Kipling Ridge Station. And the reason I'm talking about those two is because both of them are within urban renewal areas. So I'm going to be talking about the development side, and Sarah is going to be coming in to talk about the parks and trail system for these two stations. Okay, so the way this is laid out really is it's a 10-year checkup on the Transit Framework Plan. So Council adopted it 10 years ago, 2007 is 10 years later. So are, is the plan still relevant? How are we doing with the plan? So when we go through this, remember that everything you see here was what was created 10 years ago. So the plan 10 years ago for development was to provide a variety of employment, retail, and housing. This is for the Old Town area. Limit land uses to mixed-use and residential. Provide for more intensive uses. And develop unique character through transit and capital improvement. Merge new development with the old. New development to complement historic character, scale, and design of Old Town. So the vision, the urban design, is to preserve the historic fabric and scale of old Wadsworth and Grandview Avenue, and preserve the grand view from Grandview, and allow higher density or taller structures in appropriate locations with design criteria. The vision for the linkages is to implement enhanced pedestrian connections and spaces, and provide pedestrian and bicycle connections. So this is the plan. So let me just remind everyone, except for two of you who were here seven years ago, about how this Framework Plan came about. This was a year-long process that the city engaged with the community, because the Fast Tracks was announced, we knew that development was going to come in relation to these stations. So there was a year-long outreach to the community to say, if development comes, when development comes, what do you want to see it look like? And this was not just a conversation where we drew up a plan, that site plan that you see right there, a land use plan, and brought it to the community and stood in front of them with this plan and said, what do you think? This was a process where we used a thing called a charrette. A charrette is a planning term where you have an interactive conversation with the citizens. You come in and you sit at small tables where you've got usually a planner and some citizens, and everyone's writing stuff down, they're drawing on maps. So it's really an interactive process to say, well, what do you want to see? So when I say this is the citizens' plan, this really is the citizens' plan, because this was a very extensive process. I think Loretta said there was, what, like 26 stakeholder meetings, plus all the different large charrettes that we had. So if you look at this land use plan, you see the purple. The purple is for Old Town, and that was to be considered mixed-use and up to four stories. You see the yellow and orange, that is residential, up to six stories. And then the pinkish color is mixed-use Newtown, up to six stories. And this shows...
Excuse me, Maureen. Can I ask you a question? Because I'm a little confused about Newtown, and I just want to... In the document, it says that Newtown is everything south of the public parking hub?
It's basically south of the tracks.
South of the tracks?
South of the tracks.
Okay.
And Old Town would be considered north of the tracks.
Okay. Because I didn't get that from the document. Where is that definition in the document?
Well, I think you can see it by the color of the land use. So you see on the screen that's on there right now, the pink color, which identifies the area as Newtown.
Right.
So it's really clarified through this graph. And I think just, you know, Old Town really is the area above the hill.
Mm-hmm.
And Loretta to this says Newtown. The Newtown District, south of the station, includes existing theater and preserves the remainder of the site for future development. So basically, south of the station, which is north of the tracks. Are you good? You look, you don't look good.
No. No, because the station is south of the tracks, isn't it?
No, you're thinking of the transit hub. The actual station is the platform.
Oh, the platform. Oh, we're talking the platform.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So here is what the Framework Plan showed as the urban design and public spaces. So I wanted to have an architectural feature up there on the corner of Wadsworth and Ralston, which is where we have that big sign that says Old Town, or Historic Old Town, Arvada. And then the view corridors, you'll see from those lines what this graph represents as the view corridors, and that there would be some public open space. Okay, so what have we built to date? What we've built to date in this half-mile radius surrounding the transit stop, if you go, you see the first thing we did was the Water Tower Village. That was in 2006. It's a, it's about 600 units. We just completed the Hilton Garden Inn, Park Place Old Town, and Solana, which I think most of you were there for the grand opening. So this is what's proposed right now. Down there on Allison, there are two projects. Both of them are owner-occupied residential. And then up there where the former Griff's is the North County Restaurant. And then the other two is Trammell Crowe Project with 248 residential units and commercial. So here are some of the projects to remind you, especially for those that haven't been here. While this is the before of what the Water Tower Village was like, here's what it is today. today. Here's Park Place today. Solana today. So this area, we pretty much have already have under construction or built the majority of the larger parcels. So what's left is really smaller infill sites. So the zoning should reflect the framework plan, and right now, there are areas where it doesn't. So we are working through the Land Development Code and are hoping to make the two documents be consistent. So the issues. So we'll go through this a little bit in some of these slides, but there's an issue on the view corridor. The document has several, it looks at it differently in a couple of different areas. Plus, we say we want to have a view corridor, but then we say Newtown could be six stories. The parking requirements, what reduction is best for a TOD, and what's best for visitor parking? And park requirements and fees, is an adjustment to the formula necessary? Urban park standards should be developed to provide some flexibility. So here are some of the issues with the view corridor. Inside of the framework plan, there are two different documents that show different view corridors. If you see that first one, that first one, I'd like to compliment City Council on, because what you, your foresight was to buy the Old Levy Building, if you remember the Old Levy Building, and demo that to create that grand plaza, which really, in the heart of Old Town, where that building used to be, that blocked the grand view, and that was the center of Grandview, where people are going to be coming on and off the train, where people are going to be coming in and out of the parking garage to come into Old Town. That is the center. And by purchasing the Levy Building and raising it and putting in that gorgeous grand plaza, we now have created this magnificent view corridor. And then you'll see from the other slide that shows different view corridors. And then here is the conflict by saying we want to have, we have these view corridors, but also Newtown can be six stories. And so here is the resolution that we, that has actually come about. If you look at number one, it shows that allow the views through the development. That's basically through the parking lot of the bank. Number two is consider providing a view terminus. That is where it hits the track bone art. And then three is by you purchasing the Levy Building and creating that grand plaza and now creates that view. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to walk you through the parks and trails.
Before you go too far, just on the grand view, what is the, what is the grand view? What are we looking at?
So the grand view, we actually had a charrette on the grand view with the public and said, what is important to you about the grand view? As you walk along grand view, you're up on top of the hill, and you have a view to the west, so you see Mount Evans, and then you can look south and see the valley, and then if you look towards the west, you can see the top of downtown. So in talking with the residents, we said, well, what view is most important? And the view that, that the community came up with resoundingly is the view to the mountains. That's the one that they felt was the most important. Not to say that some people didn't feel that the other views didn't have merit as well, but that was the overriding view that they wanted to maintain.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So in thinking about parks and trails in Arvada, it's important to remember a key goal that we have for parks, which is to serve our citizens with a neighborhood park of approximately five acres within a half-mile of their home. And the 2016 master plan, the Parks Master Plan, actually took that a step further to create a goal of providing a park of some sort within a quarter-mile of every resident in the city to accommodate changing demographics and changing trends. It establishes new park types in the master plan, acknowledging that a five-acre neighborhood park might not be possible in all areas of the city, particularly urban, commercial centers that are transitioning to residential. And so it went to establish new park types of urban parks, festival streets, pedestrian promenades, art parks, and so on, to ensure adequate distribution and access equity, and ensure the levels of service are maintained for all citizens as we move forward. And in Arvada, the Land Development Code, Section 7.11, establishes the position on how the city views maintaining park levels of service that would otherwise be reduced with burgeoning populations. So new residential development is required to provide new parks and/or provide fees in lieu to accommodate the new population's needs. So those park and other various fees will be reviewed in the Land Development Code update. As we zoom into Old Town itself, as you know, it's transitioning from largely a commercial center area to more of an infill with residential focus, and has a parkland deficit. You can see from the red half-mile radius and the green quarter-mile radius that there is no five-acre neighborhood park within Old Town. We have two-acre McAvoy Park and the new one-acre Stocky Walter Park nearby. So it is unconsidered, underserved in general by park master plan goals at this point. So walking distance to neighborhood parks does exceed that quarter-mile and the half-mile distance in general. We've established that there's a need to provide the new urban park and pedestrian-friendly routes, serving the immediate residential needs of those folks coming in, as well as serving to access the great network of parks and trails we have just outside the TOD zone in this area. So we're accomplishing that by encouraging private development to provide those urban character pocket parks, urban plazas and art plazas. And some of those improvements underway are exhibited on this slide. So access to some of the facilities beyond the TOD include a new pedestrian signal at Old Wadsworth, south of the tracks, that just went online, a new signal at Salisbury for pedestrians to access the new Stocky Walter Park and enhance that connectivity, and new 56th Avenue connection accommodating vehicles, buses, as well as bikes and pets. On the horizon, we have widening of Ralston sidewalks coming 2018 with the Ralston Corridor Plan, proposed pedestrian promenade and quality pocket parks in alignment with the master plan goals as development moves forward, and potential pedestrian connections to park and the regional network in the Columbine area, which is an underserved area. You'll see that the proposed pedestrian promenade and pocket parks could be accommodated in the nine-acre site, the Trammell Crow Site on the residential area. We'll be looking at gaining some of those facilities on that site. Some areas still needing attention, though, is the pocket park exhibited on 56 at the terminus of Vance, which hasn't been fully accommodated yet, and ensuring adequate parkland is accommodated as residential development moves forward. So those Old Town issues and opportunities is that there's limited TOD opportunities still remaining, and we need to optimize the potential, particularly in the parkland, and ensuring that the level of service we're used to providing is maintained. Residential density does benefit Old Town businesses and contributes to vibrancy of the area. Old Town and TOD uses could extend north of Ralston Road is an excellent opportunity. And there's a potential or a need for a second parking structure. And we can also consider expansion of TOD outside of the half-mile radius. And at this point, I think I'm turning it back to Maureen, unless you have questions.
Don't see any questions.
I have one question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, no lights were on.
Sorry, I didn't press fast enough. I have a burning question that I have to ask. On page seven in the document, it talks about missing link in many of the TOD plans. That comes down to an understanding of how the presence of transit can bring additional value to the community. But it asks this question, and I'd really like to know what the answer is. How do you make transit behave and be a good neighbor in the community? And then what's the punishment if it doesn't?
I think we have Loretta to address that.
I thought that was a very interesting question.
I think in, we're sort of new at this in the Denver region, so we kind of have to look at, you know, other regions like Portland, the East Coast cities, and sort of see how Arlington, Virginia, for instance, where TOD's been there for 40 years. And so it's kind of a learning experience, and of course, communities are unique. I think transit, you know, the way it's incorporated in, you know, traffic issues notwithstanding, is a very important component about how people start to get around. So when you're talking about it being a good neighbor, or if there's any sort of drawbacks to it, I think from cities' perspective and public works' perspectives, its conflicts with transit and the impacts, which we'll probably see in Old Town, of course, Adam can speak to that. But in terms of, you know, your question about it being a good component or a good element in there, I think you have to kind of look at perhaps at the older lines, mineral station, you know, benefits that have accrued to Littleton, even though the line is basically outside of their Old Town area. But I'm obviously biased. I think that there are really some very long-term benefits that start to really accrue as it becomes really a focus in a way. It's, you know, people incorporate it into their daily lives for many different reasons. I don't know. Did I answer your question?
Odd question, I thought, and an odd statement.
Okay, so now we're at the Arvada Ridge Station. So back 10 years ago, the vision for the development was a vibrant mix of institution, residential, retail and commercial uses, an opportunity to grow Red Rocks Community College towards the station, character to complement the Old Town Station area, parking both businesses and residents, and transition from higher density by the station to lower density in the neighborhoods. And the vision plans for some linkages of pedestrians and bicycles to the surrounding neighborhoods in the station, and the connection to the regional trail systems, and an attractive and pedestrian-friendly ridge road. So here's that concept plan that the community had come up with. So you see up there the top residential, up to three stories. Residential two, up to six stories. And mixed use, up to eight stories. So what have we actually done? Because this is pretty well-built out. We didn't do that high density. So here's what we've got. What we've been lucky with is we've had one master developer for this, the old Ridge Home Site, Rich Sherberg, and he has partnered with different developers to do the three phases. Phase one is the Arvada Ridge Marketplace, that is the Supertarget Anchored Center. Phase two is the Arvada Station Apartments. And phase three, he's broken ground on, just a couple of weeks ago, is the Gateway at Arvada Ridge, which is 296 units. So we have one piece of ground remaining that is in Arvada. The other one that showed that residential is really in Wheat Ridge. But this right here is still owned by the state, and the dream for this would be that Red Rocks eventually gets it, so that they can expand their campus even further. So here's kind of the before of this area. This is the Ridge Home Site as it existed. Here's phase one and two, the shopping and Arvada Station. And here are renderings of the phase three gateway.
Can somebody tell us what timing is in terms of the road connection off of Kipling?
Knock my cup off. We should be under construction next spring, summer. It'll be done by 20, at the end of next year.
Right.
So we have no issues with zoning here. Everything is working. So I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah to go over the parks and trails.
So Arvada Ridge had a similar scenario as Old Town in that it had a parkland deficit that needed to be accommodated through development. Some changes that have occurred since 2007 through development are that the plaza that was originally proposed with the transit station, that was not accommodated due to the change from structured parking to surface parking, was accommodated on the Gateway at Arvada Ridge, the Gateway Three Project, denoted as the Art Park, the public linear park on Arvada Ridge Station there. Lee Street, you'll see the Art Walk connection to station. Lee Street is under construction, you'll see it out there. That has been accommodated through development and part of the 2009 Bike and Ped Access Plan goals, as well as that new traffic signal at Kipling we've mentioned. The new trail underpass at Kipling, connecting to, connecting Van Bieber Creek Trail across Kipling, has been completed, as well as various bike lanes and improved crossings throughout the area. On the horizon, we have the new park, which is the holistic health and fitness park at this point, that was intentionally shifted a little bit northward from where it was originally proposed in the 2007 plan, intentionally due to the changing conditions of the art plaza moving, and to improve the pedestrian access for more residents in the area, improve that quarter-mile walking distance for residents. Throughout the area, we also have additional proposed bike lanes and bike improvements to bike lanes and multi-use paths, and continuing to add neighborhood-level park amenities, contemporary park elements to the regional sports complexes to improve the cross-functionality of those spaces. Wanted to use this opportunity to show an example of one of these contemporary art parks that were identified in the Parks Master Plan. This will be part of the Gateway Three, Gateway at Arvada Ridge development. They have incorporated these new urban park standards through public plazas and cultural features in public space. So we use this as an example of a very successful approach and execution of new park standards in private development for purposes of meeting public goals.
Nancy.
Sarah, one question about the art parks, and how are they going to relate with the Arts and Culture Commission? Because that's been a question that's come up.
Right. This development came online just as the Cultural, Arts and Cultural Commission was being formed. The developer did not want to be impeded by an extraneous process, but we did have the ability to review this particular artwork for conformance with general acceptability internally. The Arts and Cultural Commission will be involved in city project north, the new art park, for potentially commissioning some pieces that are for public use and engage local artists. So not this development, but we do foresee it in the area, for sure.
So in the future, when a developer comes in and they want to do something like that, they'll be involved?
We have proposed that idea to this developer, and we'll continue to engage developers with that opportunity, and see how the reception is with that developer.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a quick...
Yes.
Councilmember Ford, the Arts and Culture Commission is working on a master plan, which I foresee as a policy document that would come before the City Council, and I believe it will resolve some of the questions you're asking about.
Bob Pfeiffer.
Just a point of clarification, we did tell a developer that he had to meet with the commission. Just want to make sure we're clear on that, because I said it.
That the developer had to meet with the commission?
It should be meeting with the commission on any art selection.
Well, I can't tell you that a meeting occurred regarding these art forms with the commission, because I think as this was, as the commission was being formed, as this was coming forward, so I don't think the timing was quite right. as this was coming forward, so I don't think the timing was quite right. But in the future, yes, we will have developers meeting with the commission.
I should have been corrected in a public hearing then. It's digressing, anyways. At least we're getting some art, because we're not buying it, so at least somebody's bringing art to the table.
Right, it will be publicly accessible, but privately maintained. So looking at the issues and opportunities at the site, as Maureen mentioned, it's essentially built out, and there is one site remaining. We have established parkland with the sites we've mentioned to meet the needs of new residents, and we are continuing to establish new park and bicycle connections as funding permits. And with additional residential development fees and other sources, we're continuing to add amenities to existing parkland for more recreational opportunities to further diversify our regional sports centers and other recreation sites.
I have a quick question on that.
Yes.
I didn't see, can you go back to your trails?
Yes.
How are you connecting the Let's Stinger complex to the station? Were there improvements, or were you just zigzagging through the neighborhoods?
We go back to this one. So, so there are essentially two ways. We can take the art walk, the area in purple, to the intersection of Kipling, use the on-street, existing on-street network at Kipling.
Stay on the west side of the road and enter there.
Correct, correct. The other opportunity is to go through Miller and Meander through a designated route.
Yeah, zigzag around, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
So with the Ward Road Station, again, here is the quarter-mile and a half-mile radius, and so you can see how much is really in our neighbor, Wheat Ridge, and how much is, that's in the shaded area that is within the boundaries of the city of Arvada. So Wheat Ridge has really, quite a bit of emphasis on this, they've had a ULI panel, they've also hired consultants that have recently, within the last year, completed a vision for their station. And so they see it very much as an employment-intensive station, they see residential as being sort of a complementary use, they see high-density, mixed-use office, and multifamily housing, and actually, the city has rezoned in 2016, a portion of this site, south of 56th Avenue, to be able to have mixed-use buildings up to eight stories in height. They also see this because of a niche market for the employment use, they would like to really focus on recreation-oriented businesses. They've had market studies and really kind of feel comfortable that that's a direction they'd like to pursue. And then last November, the voters of Wheat Ridge approved $12 million for amenities and infrastructure around the station. From our station, from our point of view, through our comprehensive plan, we have identified higher-density development closer to the station. So this is really Wheat Ridge's vision. The boxes on the left-hand side point out that mixed-use area, basically, south of 52nd, they show a grid of streets and all that sort of yellow-toned area, is that area for mixed-use up to eight stories. If it's solely residential, it would be allowed to go up to six stories. They also see a linear park as really being a very important component, perhaps part of that $12 million infrastructure. With a pedestrian bridge that would go over the tracks, connect to that green line, that linear park that would go down to the pond. Around the pond, they see a regional park. And then throughout the entire area, they see connections, bicycle connections to the major trails in the area. From our point of view, our box is over on the right-hand side, and we see medium-density residential area, which is really within our comprehensive plan. So the projects, we've seen quite a bit of interest just within the last two years, actually, last year or so, around here. So the larger parcel on the right-hand side is the Haskins Station area, so it's approximately 535 units that are proposed. It's really a mix of detached and single-family housing, along with multifamily housing. There's also the Cochrane Apartments, that's a proposed annexation, just over on the north side of 52nd with a proposed 100 units. And both of those projects are currently in review. South of the tracks, there's really only one other potential TOD site, the area that's in yellow, and that's approximately 17 acres. And we also have seen quite a bit of interest, developers are coming forward with various industrial or office proposals for that site.
Mr. Marriott's got a question.
Loretta, I have a question for you, and I realize this plan was done 10 years ago, and obviously, conditions within the economy and, and on the ground have changed. It seems like one of the conflicts that we have here, I wonder how much attention was paid to it, was the, the interface between TOD development and existing neighborhoods. And this, this part of Arvada particularly, and granted, we don't have jurisdiction on all of it, really points it out, though, where you have some of the least-dense residential in, in Arvada around Rainbow Ridge, where the lots are large and the houses are large, and, you know, I don't know what the density there is, but I guess, I'm guessing it's less than four to an acre. But yet, then, the proposed TOD development is all 25 units to the acre or more, without kind of a graduated or gradually, you know, integrating into the existing density, it seems like it's just, just plopped there with no kind of buffer, no kind of working its way into it. Did this plan contemplate that, or is that kind of a changed condition where now that's something that we ought to be looking at, or how do you feel about that?
Right, well, this station was not included in the TOD framework plan, the TOD framework plan really only had the three main Arvada stations. So really, the, the plan was really part of, if I can skip ahead here, the comprehensive plan is really how it addressed TOD. And so you can see that there is a little block of multifamily residential, north of Ridge Road, sort of part of that sort of rectangular block, and to the north of that is sort of the, the single-family, or the suburban residential, I should say, I used the wrong term there, suburban residential. And that is really reflected in the Haskins Station plan, which follows actually that curve in terms of, sort of proportion, or sort of that increase in density, from that larger lot residential towards Ridge Road, which would have the multifamily. So that's part of it. So really, we, this is what we had in terms of our TOD planning. So Wheat Ridge is, as I said, is, within the last couple of years, spent quite a bit of attention on this, and one of the things is, you could probably see here, that for our comprehensive plan and our zoning here, we really haven't clearly acknowledged the TOD. So it was one of these stations which didn't have the same sort of emphasis as the other three stations, because quite frankly, we didn't have that much land around the actual station.
Yeah, but if you go back one slide, you know, you show those blue, not one, I guess, couple, these, these couple here, those blue boxes where the density's quite a bit high, you know, it's quite a bit higher than, and I, granted, I get these are, are proposed developments, but, but it seems like that these weren't part of, this wasn't part of the TOD framework plan, this is maybe just what developers have proposed, is that?
Well, in our comprehensive plan, we do have that indication of the multifamily residential that, that, let me pop ahead again, so that the medium-density residential, so that was kind of the acknowledgement of that, that we did want to, as a city, have some, you know, through the comp plan process, have some higher density there. So I guess that whole idea of transitions and compatibility, and, you know, the infill and redevelopment, that's, that's kind of an issue to, that we'll have to keep working on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on that as well, because how much, how, how much involvement, so this is always a problem with, when you have a city go in and out like this, but between the medium-density, and we have another shade of that closer to the other half-mile mark to Ridge, Arvada Ridge, in between that little peninsula, there seems to be more single-family. In fact, Wheat Ridge approved single-family there. So how much alignment was the medium-density with all the horstutes that are in and out of here, because they apparently did not see it the same way? Do, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
So right at the half-mile mark of both of them?
Mm-hmm.
In the middle there, that, that, that piece there is all single-family.
That's the one that's being developed right now?
Right now, called Quell Ridge, I think, or something. Now, that's Wheat Ridge did it, but those are single-family homes. They didn't do anything with density in that area whatsoever. So I think this goes along to what Mr. Marriott was saying, is, you know, conditions change, and I think that's, that's starting to happen here, because now it's being surrounded by single-family, and high, medium-density doesn't make sense if we're to be good neighbors to Wheat Ridge, right?
Right, although you can see where that half-mile radius is, and sort of, and again, I can't really speak to Wheat Ridge that much on it, but, oops, if I go back to this, this is really the concept here. So when you see the purple, that central purple area, that is their whole TOD area, and we understand it from a recent meeting that we had with Wheat Ridge, that they're looking at a higher-density, developers' interest in doing higher-density residential close to the station platform. And as I mentioned, the zoning does allow up to eight stories.
So they have purple where they're building single-family?
Right, but that's just kind of new development that's occurring.
No, 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 behind the black box that says Haskins Station?
Right, yeah.
That whole thing is being developed right now with single-family, so it's purple. So I just want to make sure that makes sense, because they're not following their own plan. That's all I'm saying, is they're not following their own plan, so how much, we really need to take a real assertive effort here, because if they're not even following their own plan, and we're trying to base ours off theirs, and they're not following each other, then...
If I may, there is that piece closer to, in that area you're talking about, closer to Ridge Road where they are doing single-family, but just north of that, they actually have a proposal that they're reviewing that has duplex and triplex units. So it is kind of a hodgepodge in the area there.
Up to 54th?
Yes, there's a, there's a owner that's trying to consolidate some properties to do a higher-density development in that area.
So Quell and Ridge Road is all single-family, and then they're going to do higher-density next to us?
That's, that's what's being proposed at the moment, yes.
It looks like, it seems to me it should have been just the opposite, they should have had the...
Then we would have been aligned, you know, that alignment would have worked.
Mr. Mayor, if I...
Yes.
Clearly, there needs to be some more discussion between us and Wheat Ridge, and in fact, what the city manager of Wheat Ridge and I have talked about is actually to enter into an intergovernmental agreement where we would commit resources and coordination on, on planning and development issues, transportation issues, mixed, you know, all those kinds of issues, and making sure that, that we're together, also along with Jefferson County, on, on all the various development and transportation improvements that, that might need to be made.
This one's a tough one, because of what you just said, right? Wheat Ridge, Jefferson County, Arvada, and look at these city lines, lines are crazy. I mean, it gets really, really challenging. So I mean, I appreciate you guys are doing that, so. I think it just makes us elected, both for Wheat Ridge and us, a little bit harder to coordinate, be good neighbors with each other, because unfortunate, well, fortunately or unfortunately, people don't know the difference between the city line, you know, the folks that call us don't know the difference of the Ward Station, they think it's Arvada, when it's not. So, you know, as you know, we spend a lot of time explaining that. Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on the transportation, and one of the, two of the things actually that Wheat Ridge feels are very important, is some sort of a grade separation of Ward Road with the tracks, either over or under, and also that intersection at 50th. They see that as very important as well, too. So again, too, we have a little bit of zoning that we should probably take a look at, we have this industrial zoning, we might want to have a little more flexibility for that one remaining parcel south of Ridge Road and the tracks. You've seen this slide enough already? So moving on to the issues and opportunities. So we recognize there's going to be added traffic through the existing Arvada neighborhoods with the station opening, and new patterns of transportation and access are going to be set in place. We see that there's going to be some new roadway connections at 52nd and 50th Avenues. I mentioned the grade separation. And also, there are park services that we can see that Wheat Ridge would be providing, and to a certain extent, will rely on Wheat Ridge, but as Sarah mentioned as well, too, there's a need to also take a look at urban parks and other park solutions for Arvada residents. Trail connections throughout the area are also needed, and then bicycle connections are also very important to the station. So for the summary, these are the six questions that you saw earlier, and I'll just go through these. So how is TOD at the stations developing? Well, as you've heard, we're close to build-out at Arvada Ridge, and also at Old Town. We have some very, very strong interest in development at the Ward Road Station. The strong market demand really matches our TOD vision, and that's really been a happy circumstance post-the-recession. And Sheridan is really a very long-term TOD, and is depending on resolving that floodplain issue. So we were looking at a way to sort of, at a glance, have some indicators as to where we are. So these numbers are not absolute numbers, but they're really to give you an idea. So for instance, at Sheridan TOD, we've completed about 19% projects underway, there's that one site in Adams County, there's about 70% opportunity sites, so still quite a bit of opportunity. Old Town is about 90% complete, if you include the completed projects, and then the projects that are currently underway. So it is virtually complete, with maybe only about 10% of the smaller sites that Maureen was referring to being potentially available. For Arvada Ridge, we're kind of around 88%, with just about one site within Arvada available. And then Ward, there's quite a bit of interest. So within the city, we've got about 80% of, sort of the available land, kind of really underway, right now are projects in review. So what are the successes, and is development meeting the expectations in the plan? Well, we'd say that Old Town and Arvada Ridge are very successful, and they have met the TOD vision and goals. Sheridan can take a long time, and Ward Road should have a confirmed vision, that's something that we've identified that we should have. So is the plan's vision for each station still valid? Are those three stations, yes, the plans are still valid, with some adjustments, particularly for the zoning to support TOD. But there really is the opportunity to kind of take a look for the next 10 years. How are we really going to capitalize on these stations, and all the sort of opportunities that are within that one-mile shed of the stations, including these commercial corridors, which are really the single-use corridors with retailer-commercial uses? Perhaps they should be expanded to have more flexibility, so there can be a range of uses along those corridors. And then again, the opportunity to address the vision for the Ward Road TOD. So what are the outstanding issues? Well, we talked about several of these already. Some that we haven't talked about, the compatibility of infill development to existing neighborhoods, we've touched on that with Ward Road, but that's kind of an ongoing one. Rental versus home ownership. Now, this is something, of course, we've, we're at the mercy of the market. Hopefully, some things will change that we'll see more ownership come in and around the station areas. Parkland needs, Sarah really addressed those, and then affordable housing is something still that we would like to continue to consider. So with the trends, so millennials and boomers, the housing preferences really tend to overlap with these walkable neighborhoods being very desirable places to live. But one thing, though, is that Arvada really has a high proportion of one- and two-person households, about 60% of our households are small one- and two-person households. So that really sort of is an indicator for the type of housing stock that's really desirable. Also, we're growing, we're over 117,000 in terms of our population now. So between 2010 and 2016, we had about 11,000 new residents. So the city is continuing to grow somewhere between 1.6% to 1.9% annually. So do we need an update for the TOD vision for the station areas? Well, we'd like to maybe take a look ahead for the next 10 years, and really define what the infill and redevelopment opportunities in the expanded areas for urban centers and for corridors. And we really are starting to be much more of an infill and redevelopment city. So there are these issues of compatibility, land uses, and transportation impacts, several of which we're going to address through the Land Development Code update. of which we're going to address through the Land Development Code update. So next steps. The Land Development Code update, as I just mentioned, is going to be a major tool for addressing some of these issues. We'll review the park needs, context, and fees, confirm the vision for the Ward Road TOD, and consider proactively amending the comprehensive plan as needed. And to identify appropriate parking requirements, we would like to survey parking requirements or that's happening with developments in the region, so to kind of give us some guidance. We'd like to develop urban park standards for quality small parks and plazas, continue to look for funding for first- and last-mile bicycle connections, and then consolidate all the policies and projects into a TOD corridor summary document, so we have a clearer picture of all four stations that really are influenced or, you know, do influence our land use in the city. So, questions?
Mr. Pfeifer?
Mark, did, I know we've budgeted for the, what do we call it, the last-mile commuter, bus, whatever, system. How does that, I didn't see anything mentioned, you know, it should be connected, because one of the biggest things was to take some of these stations and connect them to our shopping centers and Arvada Center and parks areas.
Yeah. I think it probably wasn't directly mentioned in this presentation, but it's certainly tangentially mentioned, and as you know, we're going to perform that study once the G-line actually comes.
Yeah, the circulator, I could, that's a name.
Right.
So when that happens?
Right.
Do you have a date, Mark? No.
David.
Two just quick questions. Do we know, has Wheat Ridge begun a conversation on the grade separation for on Ward Road?
Not with any high degree. I mean, they've talked about taking the train over the top railroad, the railroad. We've talked about taking the road under the railroad, so they don't have any feasibility study or any environmental study underway yet.
Okay. No, I kind of got excited about that. And then the Land Development Code update, when does that process really get underway?
Well, the consultant was, the contract was signed in early July. We have our first advisory committee meeting scheduled for September the 14th, and we will be at council on October the 9th, sort of.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Loretta. That is a joint workshop between the City Council and the Planning Commission. And that, to me, I think is the kickoff for the City Council.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. So that's all I got.
Right. Nancy?
I just had this question about something that was in the document that didn't make sense to me. It was on page 53, and it had to do with exploring available public finance mechanisms. And it says, "As part of the evaluation, the city should develop a strategy for addressing resistance to the Old Town bid." What does that mean?
Oh, resistance.
Resistance.
I think that should mean assistance.
Oh, resistance.
Resistance to the Old Town bid?
Yeah, assistance to the Old Town.
Or assistance to the Old Town.
No, it says resistance.
Resistance? Well, it could have. Now, granted, I wasn't here and didn't personally draft that plan, but it could have had something to do with the fact that we had tried a couple of times to form a business improvement district in Old Town, and we had failed.
Ah, okay.
And the last time, in, what was it, 2013 or, I think it was 2013, we finally did achieve success.
So we turned resistance to assistance. I love it.
Yeah. It was weird. I just had to know what the answer to that was.
Great. Mark?
Thank you.
Yes, it just seemed to me that when you outlined the next steps, we might want to include the one that Mr. Devon mentioned, and that's the intergovernmental agreement with Wheat Ridge for the development around the Wheat Ridge TOD station as one of the next steps.
Very good. Okay. Don't see any other questions. I know it's been a long night. Thank you all for your hard work and attention. We can go home.